Good catch. And could you please declare the posting of tonight's agenda?
Tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with government code five four nine five four point two.
Okay, and then we're calling this being to order for a closed session. I'm glad I realized a little late that most of us go right to the closed session link. So sorry, I was a bit tardy. I'll ask the city attorney to please announce the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council will be adjourning to close session in a consultation with Morgan Hill Police Chief Shane Palsgrove on a threat to public service or facilities under government code section five four nine five seven.
Okay, now I'll ask if there's any members of the public wishing to address this on tonight's closed session.
I see no hands up, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll be leaving this link, is that correct?
Correct. You will leave this meeting, the meet, this meeting will remain open for the public. You will leave this meeting and go to the closed session link. And when you complete the closed session, you will come back to this link.
Sounds good. All right, everyone, we'll see you in the closed session.
Michelle, are you on?
Yes.
Excellent. We're just getting back from closed session and so it's seven oh one right now. So can you just announce a five minute break? I see the mayor's just joining right now.
Thanks, Christina. I'm gonna relocate.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, there is three of us here. Well, I see John's there, but I don't see his window.
Mayor, the city manager asked for a quick five minute break for everybody to get in and get settled.
Okay, so when are we reconvening? Back at seven oh five?
I think seven oh seven.
Okay. All right, it's seven oh seven. And I'm going to go ahead and reconvene our meeting after a closed session and a short seven minute break. And we will go ahead and continue with recognitions. We have one recognition this evening. And that is to recognize that Alzheimer's Association Walk to End Alzheimer's. The Alzheimer's Association Walk to End Alzheimer's is full of flowers, each carried by someone committed to raising funds and awareness to help end this disease. It's, it's time to add your flower to the fight. The Alzheimer's Association Walk to End Alzheimer's is the world's largest event to fight the disease, and their goal is to raise critical awareness and funds to advance Alzheimer's care, support, and research. Last year, the local walk raised over one point six million dollars to support local and national programs, research, and awareness of Alzheimer's and dementia. This year, because the need is so much greater, they seek to raise one point eight million dollars. The Walk to End Alzheimer's Silicon Valley will be on October fifteenth of this year at Excite Ballpark in San Jose. For more information, please visit ALZ.org/walk. That's ALZ.org/walk. All right, and that moves on to our pro, yeah, can't talk tonight. Proclaimations, we do have five. First proclamation will be September, proclaiming that September as Suicide Prevention Month. September is known nationally as Suicide Prevention Month to raise the visibility of the mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to speak openly about the importance of mental health and the impacts of suicide to help remove the surrounding stigma and to direct those in need to the appropriate service, support services. Local and national organizations are on the front lines of a war that may still refuse to discuss as suicide and mental health remain too uncomfortable to talk about. We encourage all residents to take the time to ask about the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they think appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or a hug can go a long way toward helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. We'll also be proclaiming September thirtieth as Lewy Body Dementia Awareness Day. Lewy Body Dementia is the second leading cause of progressive dementia. While, while it, while its cause, diagnosis, and treatment are not yet well-defined, Lewy Body Dementia affects all people but is especially challenging for underserved who lack access to healthcare, education, support services, and financial resources necessary to manage the burden of dementia. Morgan Hill has demonstrated its interest in being a dementia-friendly community through the collaborative efforts of, of city, local business, and nonprofit leaders. And awareness is the first step to making positive impact on this public health challenge. We'll also be proclaiming September, the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third of this year as Constitution Week. September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two marks the two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. Also, we'll be declaring or proclaiming that September, September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Cancer remains a leading cause of death by disease among children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital abnormalities, and AIDS combined. Jacob's Heart holds the memories and honors legacy of hundreds of children from our low, who have been lost to cancer, ensuring that their precious memories will never be forgotten. It is important for all Morgan Hill residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancers on families within our community and honor the children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. And finally, we'll, we are proclaiming September as Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic community and highlights its countless achievements. Hispanics have made innumerable contributions to the Morgan Hill community, and it is important the city recognize and celebrate the diverse histories and culture of the Hispanic population. The Hispanic population is integral in our city, with business owners and residents alike who are proud to be part of the Hispanic community, but hope for greater visibility, recognition, and representation. And that concludes our, our, uh, approach for the evening. I move over to city reports. City Council reports are for members of the city councils reporting their outside activities. And tonight's turn falls on Councilmember Rene Spring, Councilmember Spring.
Thank you, Mayor. I probably will keep it fairly short. But first of all, I, I just want to take the opportunity to mention my heart and thoughts, and I'm sure all of ours that go out to everyone impacted by the shooting at the school in Oakland today. Another tragic incident that just should not happen. Locally, it's been fairly quiet with my council assignments. One of them is, is being a board member of the South County Regional Wastewater Authority. We, we now will only meet every quarter instead of monthly moving forward as, as business kind of has quiet down with the expansion project well underway. I think my colleague John McKay mentioned it as well earlier. We were given a tour through the plant down there, and it was very impressive to see that. And my colleague, Ivan Martinez Beltran, also had a chance to join us at that afternoon. So very impressive, and if, I don't know if they do public tours, but if you ever have a chance to go look at that plant, it's very impressive. And we have a wonderful staff down there in Gilroy helping us. I'm also on the Governing and Implementation Board of the Silicon Valley Habitat Agency. I, I just simply love being on those boards. And the main reason is every, every time we have a meeting, we get informed that thanks to the collaboration with other nonprofits across the Bay Area, they, they have been able to secure another huge piece of land. And in most cases, those pieces of land are here in the South Bay, in the Morgan Hill, Coyote Valley areas. So probably one of the smartest moves the city has done, and I can't get credit for it. But, but I love to serve on those boards is really to participate in, in, in the Habitat Agency together with all those other agencies and cities. And we are one of those areas and cities that is benefiting from the mission of that agencies. Where further up north, they, they have to pay into funds to get out of fools. And, and that enables the agency to, to secure and buy land down here in our area. So, so this is just simply wonderful. So, so have a look at the Silicon Valley Habitat Agency if you ever get a chance. And then I think it was last week, uh, attended a wonderful event, very close to City Hall with the reveal of the, the peace call. And I really wanted, wanted to thank Janet Lieber Sledge and her sister Monica Clintock. They for over ten years have really stoked behind this project and pushed for it and, and raised money and worked with the city to make it happen. And of course, a huge thank you to Chris Kioni and everyone else in the city staff to, to help to, to make that happen. So if you haven't seen the peace call yet, it's right outside the, the library, between the library and the council chambers. So go have a look. So it shows the, the word peace in twenty-seven or twenty-eight languages all spoken or used here in Morgan Hill. So a wonderful project. And that concludes my report.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Spring. And with that, we'll move over to city manager report. Ask Ms. Turner if she has a report for this evening.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, and my teammates. Tonight I have a few items for you. The first is just a reminder that Sidewalk Saturdays have started back up, and those go through November twenty-sixth from nine AM to one PM, where the community is invited to come support local businesses right by the farmer's market. Next, I wanted to mention that on October thirteenth, from ten to eleven thirty, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce in honor of Manufacturing Week and featuring two panels with leading industry experts. So that should be great. And then the last item that I want to spend a little bit of time on is related to our town hall that was yesterday with PG&E, and that is, a recording of that is available. And so after the outages that started in early September, we worked, we've been attempting to work very closely with PG&E and have asked for a significant amount of information from them. Just in summary, like why we've had daily outages for thousands of Morgan Hill addresses and asking for detailed records of the failures and preventative maintenance work that's been performed, as well as what sort of formal capital improvement plans that they have in place for the improvement. So basically, the why for what happened and what, what are they doing currently and going forward to help the infrastructure in Morgan Hill. We've asked them just to work with us on a technical working group, as well as be present in our emergency operations center in the event of outages. And so last night at the town hall, basically, the town hall was put together. Well, we asked PG&E to come and to speak to our community just directly about, about the topic of the outages. And so I opened up just by talking about the significant impacts. Our community is frustrated and understandably so. You know, one day, okay, but no, this was multiple days and just stated that it's unacceptable. And it was just compounded by the fact that there was very little communication from PG&E to us as the city and also to the community. And pointed out that the city does not control PG&E on the electric or gas side. We're not responsible for the delivery of those services. Instead, the California Public Utilities Commission oversees utility companies like PG&E. But what our job right now is, is to get PG&E to provide the information that we're looking for and really to see what they can do to prevent the outages from happening. And so they went through the outages and provided what information that they have about the outages and what they're doing. And so they provided good information, and they answered some of the questions, but there were a significant number of questions. They have committed to providing us and providing our community responses to the questions that hadn't been answered. And then, of course, while the information was good, it's, it's not enough yet. And so we're asking for more, and we're asking for results. So more to come on that, and they have agreed to come to a future council meeting. And so that will provide an opportunity for our community, as well as our city council, to engage with PG&E directly. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And I'll ask now the city attorney, Mr. Larkin, if he has a report for this evening.
Um, I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Okay, then I'll look to my colleagues to see if there are any other reports this evening. And Councilmember Marcus Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just like, I wanted to share in light of Latino heritage, Latinx Heritage Month, as I like to call it, that I am part of the League of California Cities Latino Caucus. And I have been in here for the past three years. They are a group comprised of local elected mayors and city council members statewide. And we strive to educate and inform local elected officials on issues unique to Latino communities throughout California. We work to achieve its mission by increasing the effectiveness of Latino policymakers in California, mobilizing Latino elected officials to engage in a greater capacity within local and state government and promoting policies that advance and benefit Latino political and civic engagement and the greater community as a whole. And we will be having our regional mixer. I am very gracious to the board for allowing us to hold that at Googly Amo Winery and giving us a chance here in Morgan Hill to show off our beautiful wine trail and our local wineries. And that'll be on October sixth from five thirty to seven thirty. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember, and Councilmember McKay? And Councilmember McKay, you're muted.
Yeah. Thank you. Let me start again. But anyway, I wanted to say, thank you very much for, actually, thank you very much to our city manager for, I think the firm opening to the, to the town hall last night with PG&E. And I think it, she really started to express the sentiment of our community. And I think I can speak for everybody on the council that we've got some tough questions that we're going to be addressing PG&E with in the future. I just want to assure the community, I've been getting a lot of emails. I think they are going to be answering a lot of questions. The other thing I wanted to bring forward was, I, I lost my father to Alzheimer's. Lewy Body Dementia is, is one of those diseases that affects the memory like Alzheimer's. And what I'd like to do is ask that we actually extend the celebration or actually the honoring of Lewy Body Dementia for the month of October, because we are so late in, in September. I'd like to actually have that carry over into October. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's seeing any other hands. And I will go ahead and we'll go over to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment for, on items that are not on today's agenda. If you would like to make comments that are on items that are on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during public comments are not generally answered. If you have a question, please send them to the city clerk at CCPublicComment. It's, it's all one word, CCPublicComment@morganhill.ca.gov. And I'll give you that one more time. It's CCPublicComment@morganhill.ca.gov. It's also in the agenda to receive a response. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public wishing to address on items not on tonight's agenda.
Yes, Mayor, Nick Case. Nick, you should be able to unmute.
Uh, this is Chuck Bergoff. I'm here sitting together with Nick. I'm the co-founder and chairman of the Susan Charles Bergoff Foundation. On behalf of our Board of Directors and Advisors, I want to thank the mayor, the council members, the city staff, and community leaders for supporting our work, learning about dementia and brain health, and joining us to make Morgan Hill a dementia-friendly community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chuck.
Our next speaker is Chris Tremaine. Chris, you should be able to unmute.
Sorry about that.
There we go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Constantine and councilors. My name is Chris Tremaine, and this is my neighbor Judy McAndris. We live in the city limits of Morgan Hill in a residential neighborhood. We share a neighbor who has had a rooster for over two and a half years, and he crows on and off all day, which is a terrible nuisance. We also have videos to back up our claims of the crowing. This has been a nuisance to Judy and my family also. According to the city ordinance six point two four point zero two zero, no one shall have an animal or fowl that interferes with the reasonable and comfortable use of property in any neighborhood by howling, yelping, or other noises frequently or for extended period of time. Four cities surrounding us have banned roosters in residential neighborhoods because they are a public nuisance and extremely annoying. We're both retired and not being allowed to have peace and enjoyment in our home. We're, we're hoping you, the city council, will kindly consider banning roosters in residential neighborhoods in the city limits of Morgan Hill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Mayor, I have no other hands up.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, we will go ahead and close the public comment, and I will move on to ask my colleagues for adoption of tonight's agenda.
I move. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Spring and a second by Councilmember McKay. We have a roll call vote first.
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmembers Borgioli?
Aye.
Spring?
Aye.
Martinez Beltran?
Aye.
McKay?
Aye.
That moves to our consent counter. Items appearing on the consent counter are considered routine and may be approved by one motion pursuant to city council policy and procedures. Any member of the council or public may request to have an item removed from the consent counter for comment and action. I will now look for my colleagues to see if they have any items they'd like to have removed from the consent counter. Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I gave city manager heads. I'd like to pull item number one for discussion or of an alternate solution or resolution. And I also would like them to be on record as a note for item number three and four. We don't have to pull it, but I just want to state the note.
No vote on three and item four?
Correct.
Okay. And for item one, would you like a report?
No, I, I think it's pretty obvious what it is, but I, I don't know.
You have questions then?
No, no, I'd like to propose an alternate resolution.
Okay. And, and thank you very much for bringing that up to the city management attention prior to the meeting. And Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull one, three, four, and five.
One has already been pulled, as you've heard from Councilmember Spring. So you want to pick item three?
Four and five, and I think eleven is also on there.
You want to pull item eleven as well?
Yes.
Okay. And you want reports or you have questions on all these items?
Um, I would like reports on one, three, four, and five.
Okay. Okay, and I stated Councilmember Spring's already pulled item number one, so that's already been pulled. Okay, so with any other?
Report though, Mayor.
Okay. Um, I don't, what, I don't know what you want to report on. It's, 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 it's just to determine that, that we're going to have an in-person meeting. There's not, it's not anything to, we, we really can get a report on.
The city manager's clear. I've spoke with her prior.
Okay. So with that, I don't see any other hands going up, so could I?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we just, a quick clarification? Just, it would be helpful just to make sure that we're talking about the correct items and that the items are as follows. So one is the in-person meetings, three is the P-Bid, four is the Redwood Tech, five is Villamere Monte, and then I think you said eleven, but I think you meant ten, the purchase.
I didn't say eleven. Councilmember Martinez Beltran said eleven. So if she wanted ten, she needed to say that. Do you need item ten, Councilmember?
No.
Okay, so item eleven then is the one that we were pulling.
Oh, so just to confirm, it is the tree maintenance service contract?
Let me, let me go back and see which, what item eleven is.
I think, I think the council member intended to pull item twelve.
Well, okay, everybody, hold on, hold on. Everybody stop, everybody stop. Instead of, instead of assuming what the council member wants, let's ask the council member what she would like. Now, council member, you asked to have item eleven pulled. Item eleven is, let me read the title, is to award tree maintenance service agreement. Is that the item you'd like to have pulled?
That is not. I was incorrect.
You'd like to have pulled. Give me the title, please.
I would like to pull the unclaimed credits, please.
Can you give me the full title of the agenda?
I don't have that. I believe.
I can go ahead and read it. Item twelve is releasing unclaimed credits less than fifteen dollars.
Okay, item twelve is the one that you, so is that the one you'd like to have pulled instead of eleven is item twelve?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so could I have a motion to approve the consent counter excluding item one, three, four, five, and twelve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And just for clarification, since we pulled item three and four, Councilmember Spring, you can, when we vote on those items separately, you can then vote negative if you'd like to do that. So with that, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmembers Borgioli?
Aye.
Spring? Martinez Beltran?
Aye.
McKay?
Okay, that moves us to item number one, which is to adopt a resolution determining that conduction of in-person meeting would present a public health risk and continuing telecommunication, telecommuting conference meetings. With that, why don't we just go ahead and go right to the report, and I will look to our city manager, Ms. Turner?
Yeah, so I'll give a brief report on this. And so over the last several months, we've been bringing forward this item to you, and it's consistent with AB three sixty-one that requires bodies to adopt a resolution if they're going to meet, if they're going to meet remotely. And so we're bringing this item forward again. The resolution's consistent with the county health officer's recommendation that legislative bodies continue to meet remotely to promote social distancing to reduce the risk of COVID nineteen transmission. So basically, the council has been meeting remotely, and we're basically, we've followed what the county's doing, and the county is still meeting remotely. And so just to kind of provide an update, the, the county has dropped many of their health orders, but one of the health orders that they've held on to is requiring masks, not just in medical facilities, but requiring masks in county buildings. For instance, you know, our library is run by the county, and so masks are required. And so masks are then required at board of supervisors' meetings. And so they are still, the foreseeable future, going to meet remotely. However, with that said, at a recent board of supervisors' meeting, the topic was discussed, and a few of the supervisors voiced an interest in returning to in-person meetings. And so I think through my conversations with, with individuals at the county, I think that's going to come back, and we'll see them going, my guess is, in the next couple of months, going back to in-person meetings. And so that's sort of where we're at. And so now I think it would be appropriate to see if the council has any questions.
Great, thank you very much. And Councilmember Spring, you wanted to put forth a, an amendment or a, a substitute motion?
Yeah, if that's the right term, I'd like to make substitute motion to only apply this rule for tonight so that we can obviously continue our meeting tonight. But then starting in-person meetings for council and commissions and so on, on cities level. Uh, for council and commissions and so on, on city level of Morgan Hill. Uh, as of uh October, uh again, assuming that is 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 logistically doable. If if next week, assuming we'll have a meeting next week, if that's too early, uh then then whatever the next one is in October, that that is feasible. Uh, I I'm well-known and community is probably one of the most cautious people and thankfully I haven't had COVID yet. But I'm running out of excuses not to meet in person anymore. Uh, a lot of events and meetings outside of what we do. In our community, people just don't wear masks anymore and still get together in crowds and 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 and. Quite often, I've been the only one wearing masks and it makes me feel awkward, but but I I can't just justify not meeting in person anymore. Uh, because everyone else outside our regular meetings, we do meet uh with none of these rules applying anymore. Uh, doesn't mean COVID is gone, I uh but I think uh we said earlier in the summer, prior to the summer break. In the fall, we would reconsider this and I think now is the time to reconsider this. So that would be my motion. Uh, for tonight, apply the rule as proposed by city staff. And then as of October, uh to move to in-person meetings again for city council and all the commissions.
Okay.
If I may just.
Wait, hold on a second. So council member, I believe that you we don't have to do a substitute and and uh. Uh, our counselor can advise us, but I believe we have to approve this resolution just for tonight's meeting. And that our next meeting in October, which will not be in the first week because it's Yom Kippur. Uh, then then we would, if we were gonna not meet in person, we would then have to have another resolution. Is that correct?
No, no, that's not correct. Um, and and we've actually, because this resolution applies to all of our boards and commissions. Um, and just one point of information, we've already noticed boards and commission meetings going out past um tomorrow. Um, over the next few weeks that as um as virtual meetings. So um if we were to to adopt a resolution for tonight only, then um we would have to. Um, continue those meetings as well. So if councils inclined, um, the recommendation would be to. Um, amend the proposed resolution to have it expire um just prior to your next. Meeting, which will be on October the.
Nineteen.
So that it would expire on October eighteenth.
That's fine, that's fine, that that means.
But but it does need a motion and a second, and we have the motion.
Yeah, that is my motion then.
Understand. So uh, we have a motion. Is there a second? I will second that. And before we go forward, it was brought to my attention that I forgot. To ask the members of the public if they have any items that they would like to comment on on a closed session. So I'll now go to the city clerk. To ask if there's any members of the public would like to have a an item pulled.
Um, yes.
Or comment on.
Let me call on Marvy and see. Marvy, do you have an item you'd like pulled from consent or raising your hand to speak on?
Well, it it was to pull item number one, but it got pulled. So when it's a public comment is available for that, I would like to speak.
Perfect. I'll leave your hand up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other?
Yeah, there's one more. Joe Baranowski.
Yes, good evening, uh, council. Um, I I request that item nine, approve the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting minutes. Be uh pulled, and I'd like to comment on that when it comes up.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
And then I'll ask our counselor, do we need to do a a a revote of our our consent calendar because we're not pulling a different item? Or can we just pull that one in another vote?
Um. I would, I I don't think you need to revoke. I think we can revise it to reflect item nine as being pulled.
Okay. Then we will not revoke and I'll just add nine to the list. Um, is there, okay, and Councilmember Spring, I'm sorry, Councilmember McKay. You have a question or comment?
Yeah, uh, basically, what uh what will this meeting look like? Uh, is staff ready? Do we have all of the uh video and audio equipment ready to go? Um, what will be? Uh, we will be at the dais, staff will be there, I guess, in their normal places. Um, will we have, what will, will it be a hybrid meeting? Will we actually still allow speakers to call in? Will they be on Zoom only? What what will it look like, I guess? That's what I'm like, that's my question.
So we were ready to, so we were ready to go in August with a hybrid meeting. So we have all the equipment and re- ready to go. But then I'll I'll ask the city clerk if she has anything to add to that.
Thank you, Mayor, and just turn the video to me buttons to click. I'm just answering that question. You're correct. We have been ready to go since August and we continue to test the equipment. At least monthly to make sure that we're prepared should council make this decision. Um, what we envision is that council, the city attorney and city manager and clerk staff would be in the building. Um, the public is welcome to attend in person or via Zoom. We will allow public comment in person or via Zoom as we currently do. And so what we would do is set an order for the public comment to be called. For example, anybody on Zoom, we would call those speakers first. And then we would go to the in-person speakers so that there is a predictable pattern. Um, the meetings would still be live streamed on Facebook as well as our website.
Okay, at that point, will we actually be, uh, will we be able to allow? Um, all those people that are attending virtually uh to actually show themselves so that we can see them as they're speaking? Because I think that that one of the things that we've always looked forward to is actually, you know, everybody's expressions. Um, and all that, because that I think is an important part of what we do when we um observe people and and listen to them. So is I I'm I'm seeing a city manager shake head. No, but I mean, isn't it, isn't it important also to see the person?
It is very important to see the person, um, but we would still have, and I apologize for interrupting you, city manager. We still have the same security issue. So if we were to set it to a meeting, we still have the problem where somebody could turn on their video. And do or show something inappropriate. It takes away that layer of security, which would be detrimental to the meeting.
Okay, that's a shame. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And uh, Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so yeah, a couple of questions. One is, so this. The motion is to resume, but it sounds like now we're talking about the second week in October or the second meeting, pardon me, in October.
So the first meeting is canceled October the fifth due to the Yom Kippur holiday.
Right, okay, okay. And then as far as the logistics on that side, so until then. When we meet again in September, um, you know, kind of going back to what um council member. Was just talking with Michelle about, and you know, I've had many discussions about that. I think it is important. To know who we're talking with. I know sitting on the PG and E uh webinars, you know, many webinars that we sit on. Where we're not on the panel, you can understand what the public feels like. You don't know who is participating in the call with you. You can't see other people's questions or concerns that they're bringing up. And it it really doesn't feel like you're working in community. It very much feels like you're kind of isolated still. And and working um on your own. And so I would like to ask that we do try um to. Let people know how many people are on the call and if we can show the chat so that we have. Um, we can see what people, what questions that people are asking even before they're read off to us. Um, so that we can be having and sharing those thoughts and thinking, people can be thinking in community as well. Um, and then. Yes.
If I could just jump in and answer that um before you continue. So I believe we should be able to show a participant list, which would show names. We would not be able to show video because that is a very big security risk and our TV director would definitely have big feelings about that. Um, we don't use the chat and will not use the chat moving forward. So there will not be typed questions for council meetings. Town halls operate a little bit differently, um, but we don't use the chat or Q and A for council meetings.
Okay, so is there a way to show somebody's name or their phone number when they're speaking?
Yes, so we can show a participant list, which shows their name as they have typed it in, but they do have the opportunity to change how their name is typed. And it will show the last few digits of their phone number, not a complete phone number.
Okay.
That's just how Zoom displays it.
Great, and um. Okay, that that would be helpful, at least to allow them to be able to see who is on the call with them. That would be great.
And we would still announce, as we do now, when they raise their hand to speak, I would still call their name, just like we would in public. Or um via Zoom. And just a reminder that people can choose to remain anonymous, so they can type their name in as anonymous. Just like they can write anonymous on a speaker card. There, we cannot require that they provide a name.
Okay, you also talked about when we return and when we do have meetings that there would be. We want to establish an order of how things are done. I think that's a great idea, but I would ask that we have people who are there. Go first, because they actually have made the effort to come into the meeting and may need to get somewhere. So I think we should allow them to speak first and then we can go to the people who are on Zoom that may be driving or what have you, but they have a lot more flexibility. Um, so I would like to see us do it in that order if we could. Um.
I would just say, council member, I think you're making a pretty big assumption on that. I I don't know if you can assume that just because somebody is calling in. That they have more time than somebody who was actually come in, but we can, we can discuss that offline as far as who goes first. I actually never really thought about what order we would call in, whether it would be just people who are in the chambers, ask questions first. Or we go on the phone. Um, but yeah, welcome to hybrid, right? That's something we've never had to do before, so we've never really had to discuss that before. But um, I think we have to be careful in how we decide who goes first. And uh, I don't want to assume just because they couldn't come to the meeting that they should go after somebody who was there. You know, we don't know, they may not be mobile, they may be elderly, they may not have the ability to to drive. And giving them the opportunity to to attend the meeting via the phone. Or whatever device, if they're using the computer, is something that we've never actually been able to do before. And I think this is opening it up to having more people attend our meetings. Um, making it more convenient for our ten. But this is how whoever goes first, I think we can, we can decide that uh on a later time.
Right, I don't think I meant to say they have more time, but I do think it's more convenient to be able to log on than to come down. To sit in the meeting, so, okay, I forgot my last point, but uh when I remember, I will raise my.
This is for questions right now, so if you have questions, we can.
I agree, but I when you interrupted me, I lost my question. I apologize, so.
Okay, I I apologize. I was just trying to a- 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 answer your 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 concern.
No problem.
So with that, when you, when you think of that, you have two minutes and ten seconds left, and then I will ask uh Mayor Proten for your question.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So let me understand this, because I don't think I do. So if you're going to do a hybrid in sometime in October, it's going to be in-person and call-in. Is that what you are indicating a hybrid is?
That is correct. The council would be in in the chambers, but members of the public can either attend via Zoom or in the chambers.
So the question I have is, um, and let me give you a background. So um, I I have an immune system, you know, compromised. I have a compromised immune system. Um, I I have had a COVID. It is a pretty serious thing for an elderly person. So if if you haven't had it, like one of my colleagues said he hasn't had it, you're lucky. Um, but is the filtration system in place? Because that was one of the big items that you had to refit. Um, going into the following from these past two years. So is it, and are are you going to do distancing with the public who attend?
So there there is no plans for distancing. In other words, there's no plans to have seats six feet apart. Because that's not part of the, that there's no longer requirement, as well as indoor masking is not a requirement any longer. Um, I'm not, I would believe that you could not attend. I'll ask the 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 our counselor to uh. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, there isn't anything that says you can't meet at home. You, we would fall back to what we used to do. When a council member couldn't attend, they could have, uh, they could attend via phone. However, you would have to post the agenda at your, wherever you would be. And it would have to be noticed in the agenda, the address of where you would be. So if you would be at home. Your your home address would have to be agendized and you'd have to post um there if you didn't feel comfortable. Because I believe that's still part of the brown line. I don't, I don't believe that was relaxed. I know there was talk about that, but I'll ask Mr. Larkin if that is still the case.
That's the case until January first. Um, I think that that the legislature wasn't anticipating. Um, most meetings going back in person this this early, but uh because there, they didn't pass an urgency ordinance. As of January first, um, you still can't attend from home if you're healthy. But if the council member was sick, then they would be able to attend from home without. Or if they uh other circumstan- certain other circumstances, then they can attend from home without having to allow the public into their. Into their house to attend a council meeting. But otherwise, um, you're right, Mayor, that between now and January first. Um, if we don't adopt this um a. Uh, resolution declaring the emergency, then council members are required to either be in person or allow. Members of the public into their homes to attend the meetings.
So one of my questions still wasn't answered about filtration.
So we have not updated any any filtration in the in the council terms, I believe, no?
Yeah, yeah, Public Services Director Chris Gioni could speak to our system, um, make sure he's on.
Ah, there he is.
There he is.
Light just lit up. There we go. All right.
To be asked, uh, to be part of this item. Um, yeah, we've updated all the uh filtration and all the city buildings. To the uh recommended filtration for COVID. We did that some time ago with uh Merv six filters.
And of course, we'd also be uh asking or or encouraging anyone who was in the chambers, uh, if the. If there's space to space out and obviously, uh, if they, if they feel comfortable to wear a mask. And I'm sure your colleagues on the desk would be more than happy to wear a mask if that makes you feel more comfortable. As well as yourself.
Yeah, well, uh, thank you, Mayor. That that's all my questions.
Okay. Okay, not seeing any. Oh, customer mark is about time. You remember your question? And you're muted.
Sorry. Are we able to ask members of the community to wear a mask? Um, for, you know, if there's elderly people who are coming or something like that, or is that really just everybody's uh individual preference?
So there is no mask mandate. We cannot make people wear a mask. We can strongly encourage and make it available to them. Um, but we can't tell somebody that they can't attend the meeting without wearing a mask.
Right.
The council could adopt a policy for council meetings requiring mask wearing, um, just as the county has done.
Okay, um.
But uh, not not to cut you off, but to finish that up, would we have to agendize that? Um.
The, yeah, the if the council wanted to adopt a policy requiring masks at council council meetings, it would have to be an agendized. This agendized item, so that could be done at the first meeting back in person, or it could be done if this motion doesn't pass. Um, then it can be done at a. Um. At a future virtual meeting before going back in person, whatever the.
The next meeting, regardless of where it's gonna be in in council or chambers or in on Zoom.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm just trying to understand, since this is all new and we're figuring out what to do. I don't know where I'm at with that, but I'm just, you know. Trying to think through everything. The one thing uh, Mayor, that I did want to ask about was security. And if we could maybe have some type of a. Of just, you know, it's been a while since we've all been together and maybe we could have just a refresher on. Um, you know, what what's acceptable and what isn't. I've had some recent encounters that are a little bit worrisome. Um, and from members of the community, and I just want to make sure that that we um. That everybody, you know, is coming back with the best of intentions.
Well, I I I think I'm understanding that you're 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 concerned about whether or not we have security in the chambers. We always have a police officer in the in at a meeting when we were, when we would meet live. So is is that what you're you're asking about?
Yeah, and maybe we can just remind every, you know, including everybody what. You you know, what things would maybe not be permissible um at a meeting or what our order is gonna be. Maybe you can go or that, whatever it is. But I would like for that to be established.
What what exactly are you referring to? Because I mean, there are standard decorum measures that we 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 handle. And as the chair of the of the of the board, so to speak, it'd be, it's my responsibility that if any. it'd be, it's my responsibility that if anyone doesn't follow that decorum, then I take control, stop the behavior. Um, other than that, there is really no, there's no announcement that we, we make. I mean, I can, I can say, hey, welcome back and please behave yourselves. But it's really my responsibility to make sure that everyone, um, is behaving properly while still, uh, allowing their First Amendment rights.
So Mayor, there's a new law that goes into effect also in January 1st that will address, um, many of council member Martinez-Beltrán's concerns. Um, it will require us to come forward with a, a policy on decorum to the city council. But, um, we'll be prepared to do that, um, sometime in December before we come back in January.
So I was just, again, letting the council member know that that is how we would go forward until that law is put into, into effect. So is, is there anything else you would like?
Yeah, maybe Dawn, if you could share that with me and then I'll, I'm happy to review that. And I could make some suggestions, Mayor, that you could share at the meeting if you are so inclined.
Of course, I want everyone to be comfortable and safe.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? No more questions? Then I'll go hold, go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Um, thank you, Mayor. We have a few hands up. So we'll start with our first speaker, Marvy Lee.
Hi, everyone. Just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members and staff. So this is long overdue. I am glad it's been brought up tonight by other members of council. Um, people have been meeting in person for several months now. And I think, um, the fact that it's taken this long for council to bring it up is rather unfortunate. I'd like to further point out that I have seen most, if not all of you at public events, indoors and outdoors without masks, and you didn't seem to have any concerns. So the fact that you've waited this long to rescind this or not renew it or decide not to renew it is frankly disingenuous, hypocritical. And by God, make sure you meet in person because the transparency issues and serving the public has not been happening because frankly, you've been hiding behind these Zoom meetings for a long time. Um, three of you are running for office and going to be at a public event in a couple of weeks. And looking at the last one, people were there in person unmasked. So please don't tell me that there's a concern with it because you've, like I said, I've seen most if not all of you at events and you haven't been masked and you haven't seen concerns. Thank you very much.
Amy is Lee.
Our next speaker is Chris Tremaine.
Yes, um, as this is my first city council meeting, uh, we had requested, uh, banning roosters within the city limits and residential neighborhoods. Uh, I'm not sure how this goes.
So Ms. Tremaine, you've already commented on that in items that are not on tonight's agenda. This item is, is about adoption of the resolution determined our conducting in, in person. So that is not on the agenda, so we cannot comment on that. And there is no further public comment on that. If that's the same item you'd like to bring up, you've already brought it up and we'll take it under advisement.
So how would, how will we know if anything comes about?
So, uh, you've, you've, you've made your statement. And if any of the council members wish to bring it up, uh, or, or bring that agendized, they can do that. Okay?
Well, somebody just gave me a thumbs up, I think.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Tremaine.
That's it. Our next speaker is Joe Bernowski.
Yes, good evening. Uh, first of all, uh, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Spring, uh, for making this motion. I'd like to thank the previous speaker for her comments, which I totally agree with. You know, the only, the only real reason, um, that you can justify allowing events like candidate forums to happen in, in City Hall and not, uh, allowing the public to come where their business is being done is simply because you dug in your heels and said that we're following county policy. See, and darn it, we did that and we're going to stick with it. There's no other good reason. Let's face it. There hasn't been a good reason for more than a year. I want to give you a practical reason. And the reason, I'm going to talk more about this one, reason I pulled item number nine. At that meeting, which was a month and a half ago, the staff conveyed information, material information to a decision that was being made that was a hundred times off, not a little bit, a hundred times off. It was stated that a certain property tax would produce $1.9 million when the fact is it will produce $19,000. Now I realized something was wrong immediately. And I had somebody buzzing in my ear. I did my three minutes. Took me a few minutes to realize what was going on. And I guarantee you that I've tried to raise my hand again. The answer from the mayor would have been, well, we're sorry, Mr. Bernowski, but we're already closed public comment. You said what you said. Too bad. I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt and assume that if I was in person and stood up politely and said, Mr. Mayor, this isn't a really unusual exception. You just heard information that was a hundred times off. I, can you just ask the staff to correct that? I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt and say that, you know what? You would have listened to me and it would have been a polite conversation. Not only that, but the fact that the answer I got when I reported this is apparently that, well, everyone knew about it. All the council members just immediately did their calculation and they, they converted the hundred times off to what it was supposed to be. I would suggest if there's any more indication about how out of touch you've become, I couldn't give you one. You might as well just shut off your cameras and talk to each other. If that's the answer you're going to give me to that. These meetings are not for you five people and the staff. What about the public that heard that misinformation a hundred times off? I'm sorry, I do not mean to call misinformation. The, the staff member who did that clearly did unintentionally. It was not misinformation. But it was left uncorrected for a month and a half. And it was material to your decision. Open City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernowski.
I have no other speakers, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and close public comment and I'll open it up for discussion or action from my colleagues. Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, just a brief comment with regards to, you know, jumping to who should come first? People on Zoom or people in the room? I, 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 I would be cautious with making that call because, uh, people will listen to each other and, and then someone on Zoom uh, might not have raised their hand first, but then they hear something or a question asked by someone in the room and then they might raise the hand. You might have to go back. And, uh, so I think we should, we should give it a little bit of room to find out what works best and.
So just to clarify, when public comment is open, any member of the public, if they haven't spoken, can't speak as long as public comment is open. So if somebody is, is, say, say we do one way or the other. And again, I haven't made a decision how we do it. But if, say, we've asked everyone on Zoom and there's no hands up, but somebody now in the chambers is asking a question. If another hand goes up on Zoom, as long as public comment is still open and they haven't spoken already, I will give them time to speak. That's, that's no different than, that's no different than if somebody right now, uh, while, while Mr. Bernowski was speaking, if, if they raised their hand, we would, we would, we would take, take comment even. So that, that part wouldn't change.
Okay, awesome. That's, that's all I, that was my only comment.
Understand. Customer remark is about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is great, getting, trying to work through all the details. And thank you for all the public comments. You know, I, I want to address one of them, which is, um, talking about council members being places. And you're right, we have been places. I mean, COVID and isolating and masks were never, um, it, it was ever put in place to protect people, you know, like me. I'm not 60 or older. I don't have an autoimmune. That was to protect the greater community and that was to, um, you know, provide that safety or comfort to them because there was a real threat for them to be sick. And so when I'm asking about that, I too am thinking, not for me, but again, for those people who want to come. And as we said, come and hear the city business and be in community that they feel comfortable if they are elderly, if they are, um, you know, uh, have an, an autoimmune issue so that they can also participate and feel protected as well. So that's, that's why I ask. And, you know, again, it's, it's up to however we, we want to have that done. If people want to do that on their own or if we want to provide masks and they simply go ahead and get them, it sounds like we'll figure that out coming forward. Um, but I just wanted to clarify, you know, I, I have for a long time understood the frustration. I've asked a few times what additions we could do on Zoom to make things a little bit easier. You know, it's, it's been hard. It hasn't been an easy road at all, no matter which way you look at it. Um, it's absolutely been a learning, uh, experience and an experience that I know I will never forget all of my years in public service. So I'm excited to see, you know, I've seen many of you because I, I do go to events and I do, um, you know, try and make myself available to talk with people. But I'm really looking forward for many of you to have that same opportunity. I know that some of you are very involved. I'd really like to come and participate in the meeting. So, and I think that that feedback between each other is very important. So, um, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember McKay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, you know, one of the things I just would, you know, that I've tried to explain to, uh, many people is that, you know, the city of Morgan Hill doesn't have a public health officer. And so we relied on the, the county to provide, um, guidance. And that's, that was really why we really did. And, um, I was just at a meeting recently where Supervisor Wasserman was, um, the chair. And, um, and correct me, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. Uh, um, City Manager Turner, I think he said that 15 people a week or a month are still dying from COVID. And, and so it, it's really, you know, as much as I'm prepared to go back to meetings, uh, in-person meetings, I've been prepared for a while. Um, I would also like to respect the fact that we have a council member who, um, if, uh, you know, would, if that, if you would feel more comfortable with, uh, me wearing a mask, I will wear a mask. I have no problem doing that. I want to respect, um, the others around me because I think I'm, I'm okay at this point. Um, so I do want to respect that. And, um, and I also want to respect anybody else in the community that, that might really be, you know, concerned about being in attendance at a, at a meeting like that. So I'll be very, very conscious of that. Then the other thing is, um, I need help because one of my best suits has moth holes in it now. So will somebody tell me who can fix my suit? And, and with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember McKay. Um, I, I, before I go to the void, I just want to make one comment. And it was from one of the, one of the speakers, Mr. Bernowski brought up. Um, you, you know, it made me think about how we run meetings and he's actually, he's absolutely right. I, if someone said, hey, I, I think that was incorrect, I would have said, what do you think was incorrect? And then tried to recorrect that. But with Zoom, it makes it very easy to see, okay, someone raised their hand thinking, assuming that they want to further comment when they've already had their time. Um, it, hopefully I won't ever have to do this again because hopefully this will be the last time we meet on Zoom. But it'll, it, it tells me that if I see someone's hand up that had already spoken, I should at least call on them to find out why they raised, re-raised their hand and, and give them the benefit of the doubt. So that brought up something with me as, as, as we meet hybridly, if that is even a word. Um, I will actually put that in my repertoire now that if I see someone's hand up that's already spoken, I will then ask them again if they, uh, have something else to add briefly and not give them more time to take away time from others. So thank you very much for those comments. And with that, um, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this item, please.
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmembers Borghiole?
Aye.
Spring?
Aye.
Martinez-Beltrán? You're muted.
Sorry, aye.
McKay?
Aye.
Okay, with that, I move us to item three, uh, which was pulled by Councilmember Martinez-Beltrán. It's to adopt a resolution of intention to form the Morgan Hill Property and Business Improvement District and authorize the city manager to sign ballot and other documents for all city-owned properties in support of the formation of the Morgan Hill Property and Business Improvement District. Could you please pull items that have less words in their title? With that, um, I believe Ms. Turner is going to give us that report. Or no, Mr. Mayhood's giving, like, just lit, lit up.
Hi, good evening.
One thing when we meet in person, you'll stand up and I'll know exactly who's going to give me the report. I don't have to guess.
I'm, I'm much taller in person. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, my city teammates and, uh, the public. Uh, Matt Mayhood, Economic Development Director, I will give a brief report this evening. And moving over to my PowerPoint. Hopefully you can see that.
Yes, you can, Matt. It just isn't in presentation mode. There we go.
There we go. Great. So tonight, we're going to talk briefly about the downtown Morgan Hill Property and Business Improvement District, also known as a, a PBIT. And we have two action items before you tonight, recommended staff actions. So the previous city council action was on May 2nd, 2022, where the city council approved and authorized the city manager to execute a contract with Civitas Advisors to explore the formation of a property-based improvement district and directed the city manager to sign the petition indicating the city's support of the PBIT. So the formation outreach that we've done today, city staff has been busy, very busy. Uh, in November and December, that we met with downtown property owners through the Monterey Road Lane Reduction, uh, and beautification process. And during that process, we once again heard their interest in the formation of a PBIT. Um, we then brought you that action item in March. Uh, during June, July and September, city staff conducted three different meetings with a PBIT steering committee, which are downtown property owners who had expressed an interest in the formation of the PBIT. We met with them and they helped shape the management, uh, district plan and gave us feedback on what we should be focusing on, uh, within the PBIT. We then gave continuous updates at the July and August Morgan Hill Downtown Association Board of Directors meetings, giving them update of where we were in the process. In August, we mailed to all the downtown, uh, assessed property owners a PBIT marketing flyer that gave them general information about the PBIT formation process and, uh, what it meant to them and who to contact in the city should they have any questions. Uh, shortly after that mailing, we started our, uh, very targeted outreach uh, and specific meetings with property owners, myself, Brittany Sherman, Anita Ramirez, met with property owners to engage with them and discuss, uh, their interests in the formation of a PBIT and gathered feedback, uh, to continue to shape the management district plan and, uh, win their support of the PBIT formation. In September, we gave a presentation with the Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce on the PBIT formation process. And then late September, we had a downtown property owners meeting where we invited, uh, all the downtown property owners, uh, to attend a meeting at City Hall. Um, we have contacted, um, all 59 property owners, uh, within the assessment district, um, either by email or by phone. City staff has personally connected with 39 property owners. So we had some property owners not respond to our inquiries, whether it was an email or a phone call. Um, that is not unusual. And then we ultimately had 57.8% of private property owners who signed the petition in support. Um, that number, uh, could be a little bit higher, but we're waiting for one property owner to, uh, move their petition through, uh, the legal review process. And that's just taking a little bit longer. Uh, so that number could actually just be about 60%, um, had we received their petition prior to tonight. So a little bit about the management district plan. And you received the entire management district plan in your staff report. But the annual assessment budget is, uh, just over $282,000. And within that district plan, the steering committee directed us to, uh, very specifically wanted us to focus 60% of that budget moving forward on clean and safe programs. Uh, we heard that as a theme through all of our feedback with property owners and, and from business owners, uh, during other outreach. They really want us to focus on clean and safe. So they want a downtown that's clean and they want it safe. They want, uh, their patrons and our residents to feel, uh, safe in their community. 15% would be capital improvements and art installations. 10% marketing and special events. 10% reserved for administration and then 5% contingency. In addition to the assessment budget, there's a third, just over a 31, almost a $32,000 non-assessed funds that is required annually for the PBIT to raise. That would be raised through grants, revenue or donations, uh, from the, from, uh, just, uh, property owners from businesses, uh, uh, whoever wants to support the PBIT, um, through, uh, various programs. All right. So that would. Alright, so that would give a annual budget for the P-Bid of about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars on an annual basis. Here is a map of the downtown uh P-Bid. As you can see, it's um north, uh on the north side, it's Main Street on the, on the west, Del Monte, on the east, Butterfield, among the southeast, Dunn. Um, you can see the assessments on the commercial and on the nonprofit. Uh, properties, how they're assessed, a square footage assessment uh by square foot of a lot. And then there's a linear frontage assessment rate on those properties that run along Monterey Road. Third Street and Depot Street. So the cost to property owners is weighted uh based on the size, location of the property. And the direct benefit from the services. Uh, I want to note that multifamily and single family and vacant parcels are not included in the assessment. The share of the assessment. Uh, city of Morgan Hill is the largest property owner in the downtown. Their share of the current assessment within the current engineer's report is forty-seven point seven five percent. Uh, that's nearly a hundred and thirty-five dollars on an annual basis. The county of Santa Clara, twelve point five four percent. And then in total, all of the property owners, they total thirty-nine point seven one percent. Or about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars annual contribution. And you can see the total assessment there. Now, the assessment dollar and percentages may change as the engineer's report is refined. And as any um property owners may uh talk to us about why their parcel should or should not be assessed. Um, but the dollar amounts will not go up. Um, so these are the maximum dollar amounts in the first year of the P-Bid assessment. So the P-Bid structure, the initial formation is a five-year period. Assessments do not begin until January twenty twenty-four, so we have. Uh, a little bit over a year for everybody to prepare for the assessment. There will be a new five oh one C six Owners Association, the downtown Morgan Hill Improvement District. It will be a five to nine-member Board of Directors. It includes two city representatives. And then ultimately, that board will be responsible to the administrator, administer the former. P-Bid funds. And as you might remember, there's a hundred and six thousand dollars left over from the previous P-Bid. And then at the uh end of each year, just like with the Visit Morgan Hill Board, there will be an annual report. To city council. So every year, the P-Bid will be required to come back. And provide an annual report of how the money is spent and the accountability back to uh the city council. So the formation re uh process is um a two-step process. The P-Bid formation requires a submittal of petitions from property owners representing more than fifty percent of the total assessment. Uh, we received over fifty percent of the private property owners uh support. Uh, and then you add in the city's uh support. Once we've uh. Exceeded that threshold of having the majority of the private property owner's support. So we exceeded that threshold. And step two is the next step um that we'd like to move forward with after tonight. It's uh known as the Right to Vote on Taxes Act. Um, it requires a ballot vote in which each property owner uh must complete a a ballot. They are mailed a ballot, they return the ballot. And then uh more than fifty percent, once the ballots are received, more than fifty percent of the ballots. Weighted by assessment must be in support of the P-Bid formation. So it's a majority of the ballots received must be in the affirmative of the P-Bid formation for the P-Bid to be formed. Uh, if tonight we move forward, we would uh be coming back with that next step in November. Uh, here is the the timing, the formation, next steps. Uh, tonight, uh, if we move forward, tomorrow we'll be mailing ballots. We will notice a public hearing and we intend to come back on November sixteenth with another public hearing, uh count the ballots. Um, and then ask, ask for a path uh the uh passing of resolution of formation. And that would move us forward in the formation process, and then we would begin the assessment in January of twenty twenty-four. So the two staff recommendations before you tonight, approve the resolution of intention for the P-Bid formation. And then authorize the city manager to sign the P-Bid ballot. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. I'll now look to my colleagues and see if they have any questions. Let's remember, okay.
Mr. Mayhood, thank you very much for that report. So just a few questions. Uh, so the. The P-Bid uh would, has a five-year life, uh and it's in its current formation. Um, how easy is it to extend it so that you um would not have to go through a lot of extra motions other than possibly a vote? Is it very easy to extend it?
So at about year four, you go through a um a renewal process. Um, if every, if the property owners are happy and everything's going swimmingly. Uh, you go through a renewal process, which is um similar to the process we've just gone through. Um, and you can, uh, when you do renew, I do believe you can extend it for like a ten-year period.
Okay, okay, thank you. What would, right now, we have Morgan Hill Downtown Association, which performs, I believe, pretty much a different function, but very. You know, obviously they have a very similar interest. Uh, what do you see the relationship between the two organizations looking like?
I would see them as a partner organization, the same as I would see the Chamber of Commerce as a partner organization. Um, working together for the betterment of downtown. The unique situation you have with the P-Bid is you have uh the city as a participant. And you have the private sector as a participant, and you've really built a private-public partnership. Uh, which creates a unique opportunity for the city to benefit from the private sector investment, providing um enhanced services in downtown. And then working with the downtown association and the chamber of commerce to put on events and programs in downtown.
Okay, so that, um, okay, that sounds good. So really, it can be a force multiplier is is what I'm hearing. How does, how how is the board makeup, the size and the makeup of the board going to be decided? Is there going to be a series of meetings with the property owners and then a continued vote until they come to an agreement on what it should look like?
So the initial steering committee will have the ability to form the the new five oh one C six. And they've drafted um initial bylaws that uh says there'll be a a new board. Um, and a a new Owners Association, uh the Morgan Hill Downtown Improvement District. Um, they, the Owners Association will ultimately create that board, a five-to-nine-member board. It will make, be made up of um at least three downtown property owners. Uh, at least two city um officials. And then four uh folks from downtown, which could be property owners, business owners or residents.
Okay. Well, fifty-nine voices, that that could get interesting.
Five, five to nine voices, not fifty-nine.
Well, to decide what the uh, the board would look like initially. Um, so what we have is fifty-seven to sixty percent of um the fifty-three percent. That isn't owned by the city, plus then the forty-seven percent owned by the city. So technically, we're looking at already seventy-five percent support for this.
That is correct.
Okay, uh, last thing is, if you've been hearing objections, um, what are the nature of the objections? Are they things that you can work on and resolve? Um, is there an education process? So last time I went through this, um, it was a huge education process. Um, what are the nature of the objections?
Um, we've had really good conversations with a lot of property owners and um we, we, you know. Everybody who's engaged with us has really been willing to listen and talk about the issues that they're having. Um, and a few property owners who were initially opposed to uh the P-Bid ultimately. Uh, a couple of them came to support the P-Bid. Um, because their concerns were addressed, uh, we're focusing on cleanliness, we're focusing on safety. Uh, and they feel like they've been heard. Um, those who haven't necessarily moved in support are um only a few. And oftentimes, they're citing kind of much larger geopolitical issues. Um, that really the city of Morgan Hill can't address.
Okay, uh, to these conversations, have you actually, uh, you, the city, actually kind of modified position on what the P-Bid should be doing? And how it'd be handled?
Well, we've been on a listening tour. Um, we've paid attention to um the initial four. Uh, management district plan that I think city staff brought forward to um the steering committee. Has changed shape uh through the P three steering committees. And ultimately, I think the steering committee is um is satisfied with the direction we've moved. As has a majority of the downtown property owners who have signed the petition. Uh, we've shared with them the the overall concepts, concept within the management district plan. Percentages of the budget, how much their property is going to be assessed, what our goals and objectives are, and um they have been supportive.
Okay, um, is there kind of a? Is there, is there measurable outcome to the um, what would you consider to be a measurable outcome to the creation of the P-Bid?
I think ultimately, the measurable outcome is in four years from now. Whether the downtown property owners in the city will ultimately want to renew the district. Um, that will be um the telltale sign. Uh, are the downtown property owners, is the city happy with the investments that they're making? And do we feel like they're getting a fair return on investment? Um, it's very difficult to do an economic analysis prior to an assessment formation. Um, because you'd just be kind of throwing conjecture all over the place. Um, but we are going to focus again sixty percent of the budget on clean and safe programs. And and that moved from like forty percent in the original management district plan to sixty percent. Um, and again, ultimate accountability on the P-Bid comes in the form of an annual report. And coming back to the city council, providing an annual report, um, making sure the city knows where we're spending money. And providing feed, the city council has an opportunity to provide feedback uh to the P-Bid.
Okay, and I I may not have understood this, but um there's an original ninety-something, a hundred and seven thousand dollars. From the now defunct P-Bid. Um, well, can those funds be used to reimburse the city? Um, for the contribution to create the P-Bid, is that, is that part of the plan?
So those funds need to be used for the purpose of the um original P-Bid and the management district plan. Um, those uh funds uh need to be used. Based on the old management district plan. So only the new funds collected could be used for the reimbursement of the city council. Um, or the city for the formation of the new P-Bid.
Okay, and and is that intended to happen then?
Um, if and when the P-Bid is formed, the city would uh negotiate a contract with the P-Bid on a, on a payback agreement.
Okay, great. Okay, that that's it. Thank you very much.
A council member, Councilmember Martinez Bautron.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Matt. Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I have a couple of questions. So first I wanted to ask, what does a business tax? And a parcel tax require to pass?
A business tax and a parcel tax.
A business tax and a parcel tax would require two-thirds vote of the entire city, not just the affected property owners.
Okay, and the reason that I bring that up is because it wa, it's really not seventy-five percent. Um, we had fifty-three percent of business of property owners. Other than the city, because we're the largest, we own almost fifty percent, we only needed fifty-one percent. So. Really, we've got fifty-three percent of the property owners who were in support of this. So that makes me a little hesitant to go forward. I know that we are a a big property owner. But I have been, as I've expressed, you know, with you and Sprout and staff, I am trying to find out. Uh, basically, what is the city return on this investment that we're, that we're putting in? So if you could comment on that, that would be great, um, so that we could have a better understanding, please.
I think I'll also um clarify an original statement, and that was, um, we did hear from the county of Santa Clara, um, that. Although they would not initially sign their petition, they would be supportive or wouldn't stand in the way of the formation of the district if the private property owners. Um, provided a majority of the um approval of the assessment district. So we've far exceeded the threshold um that we really needed from. The private property owners, the county, um, and and the city. Um, and again, the the return on investment would be measured in.
I just wanna, I just want to clarify that. When you say we far exceeded, we have fifty-three percent. Approval rate from property owners. The rest of that percentage is from the city ourselves, and we're the ones putting it forward. Correct.
So we have, so we have uh twenty-two point nine five percent from private property. We have forty-seven point seven five from the city, and then we have twelve point five from the county. And I'm not, didn't, I can't do the math as I'm talking to you at the same time, but. Um, we have exceeded the the threshold um to move forward with the formation process. And again, the accountability and the measurement for success will be uh in the annual report that the P-Bid provides to the city on an annual basis.
And and before you ask your next question, I just want to clarify, my answer assumes that you were looking for a. A parcel tax or a business license tax that would be for the special purpose. Um, such as the 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 Business Improvement District is, um, it's the different threshold if it's going to be just going into our general fund.
Right, which usually is sixty-six percent, right? Two-thirds.
That's the 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 higher requirement is for the special tax.
Okay. Um. Uh, Matt, can you, you talked about when, when we get the annual report. What is it that we're looking for in the annual report to see, to measure that success?
I think you would be looking for tangible results on a clean and safe program. Tangible results on capital improvements and tangible results on uh marketing and special events. That the P-Bid does in downtown. And you should be able to, you know, see that you're getting uh results and things are actually happening. And the property owners are happy and the city would be happy.
Okay, what what I'm specifically looking for is what cost we are going to be paying for the city into the P-Bid. And what that return is. For example, we currently pay twenty thousand dollars for the Twinkle Lights as part of a community promotion. I would expect that that twenty thousand dollars is no longer going to be part of our community promotion, correct?
There are, if there are one-time expenses that the city has, that they are no longer going to continue and that the P-Bid would like to pick up. They certainly could do that. So the Twinkle Lights is about a sixteen thousand dollar annual um program that the P-Bid could potentially pick up. The um, the Police Department Cadet Program could be, could be picked up. As part of the P-Bid um Clean and Safe Program, which is about another fifty thousand dollars. So these are one-time expenses that if they're um not carried forward, that the P-Bid could pick up. Which ultimately could be savings for the city. And if you add those two um light downs together, it's about seventy thousand dollars here. The city uh would not be contributing, uh, but uh at a one-time expense, but the P-Bid could be picking up.
And thank you, because the Cadet program, program was my second example. But the issue that I have is that that could be, it could be, is what worries me. That needs to be designated in, as we move forward, as part of this handbook. That the Twinkle Lights, that the Cadet Program, that a certain degree of the maintenance is going to be coming from the P-Bid. So that we are no longer investing on one side and investing on the backside. Because it looks like over the course of the five years. Well, I don't have the toe, but we're looking at a hundred and thirty thousand per year for five years. Is that right?
That is correct, on the, at least on the first year. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're looking over, you know, seven hundred, about seven hundred thousand dollars. Over those five years. So I'm trying to understand what, where we as the city, we're the largest payer into this. I mean, I think it's what, forty-four percent? Can you, can, can we get some so solid? Um. Something solidified in that plan?
So we, I I understand your concern, and we have expressed. Uh, very clearly with the steering committee, that these are two programs. We would like to see the P-Bid pick up, and it is our intention for them to to pick up. But ultimately, it's the Owners Association that would have to make that decision. But ultimately, it's the owners association that would have to make that decision, uh and again, the city will have two seats on that board.
So it's up to the owners to decide whether or not the city will continue to subsidize those.
No, 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 you're misunderstanding me, it's the owners association is responsible for the allocation of the funds. Ultimately, that are collected, the city will have two seats on that board. Um, and ultimately, they make the decision how the money is spent. City staff with the steering committee has expressed our intention. That we would like to see those programs picked up by the P bid, and the steering committee understands that.
I, how can we codify that rather than suggest when we're talking about monies? I think we need to outline and make sure that's part of the policy.
So the the city can choose to stop funding certain services. Um, they cannot, they cannot eliminate services, they they need to continue to provide a certain level of service in the downtown. And then the P bid is responsible for picking up enhanced services. Uh, we view those types of programs as enhanced services that the P P bid could pick up. I don't think they can be codified tonight, um but it's our intention to move forward with that.
Okay, I I would like to to see that happen. Um, I also, the board of directors, I would like to see some more diversity on that, and you talked about two city. Officials sitting on that, but at the time, it looks like it's two city employees. I would like to see, could we have a council member sit on that, specifically a council member in this district?
So ultimately, it's um the owners association uh who will decide. Um, who sits on the board of directors and the formation of the nonprofit and and the makeup of that board of directors. Um, it's not the city councils, um. I guess, uh it's not the city council's discretion to decide what those bylaws look like, the city council ultimately in the city. Ultimately contracts with that P bid um to manage the district. So the city can have influence on what the the district looks like, or what the management district. Association looks like, but we don't have the authority to actually designate.
Um, a balance, an official and a city staff.
That is correct, and 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 I will remind you, that's not up for decision tonight, that's not part of our decision making tonight.
And so you're insuitating that we'll be coming back for a decision on on this?
Um. Ultimately, it's not the city council's responsibility to 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 decide what the makeup of the owners association is. That's up to the the property owners themselves.
Okay, so it will not be coming back to council?
No, ma'am.
Okay, the other concern that I have is I made some phone calls to business owners, and a few of them didn't know about this. They're not property owners, they're certainly impacted.
So we have talked to, um, like I said, we did our outreach to the property owners. And during that, we also talked to many property or business owners, because oftentimes, um. Property owners, because of the way their lease works, will pass on that expense to um the business. Uh, operators, and in some cases, we actually have the business operators calling their property owner saying, I support the P bid. And I'm happy to pay my fair share of it, so um and.
Like.
Our outreach, our outreach wasn't to business owners, it was to property owners, because they're the ones who are ultimately responsible. For the assessment and signing the petition.
So you gave us a number of how many you got in contact with property owners, what about business owners?
I don't know what that number is.
Can you estimate?
I don't care to estimate.
Was it five or was it a hundred?
Um, based on our outreach with the chamber, the downtown association, our individual individual outreach, there's over a hundred businesses in downtown. I don't know how many we've actually communicated with and who have received our emails and our communications.
Okay. Um.
I will, I will tell you that our outreach has been extensive.
To both owners and. Renters essentially.
It was very targeted to property owners, but we've talked to a lot of business operators as well.
Um, this is a significant investment. In addition to what we've invested already, and again, this isn't, you know. I I'm happy to see where the downtown is and where we're going, but I also am worried about the rest of the city. I would like for us to make this investment, can we make this in the Monterey corridor? The same effort that we are extending here, so that we can increase that downtown footprint.
Council member, that's out of the scope of this agenda item, uh that's something that we can take up on another.
Well, I would like to know if there's any intention for us to make. A similar investment along Monterey corridor outside of what we currently identify as the downtown. We can have, we can, we can prosper more, I mean, there's, there's plenty more that we need to work on.
Hey, Mr. Mayhood, would you like to answer that question?
Um, creating a P bid outside of the downtown district is not in the current economic development scope of work. Um, because the downtown is unique and um property based improvement districts are usually around very specific districts.
I'm I'm talking more about a specific plan, but thank you, you've answered my question, thank you.
A council member, uh, Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, Matt, what are, uh, and you, you, you said this um like four or five months ago when you. To us, uh, but I I I want you to say it again. What is the advantages of the P bid for our downtown, our thriving downtown, I may add. Uh, right now, I mean, what are the real enhancements that we can expect going forward with this P bid?
So I think what you will see um is you have a coalition of downtown property owners. Who are willing to invest and partner with the city to provide enhanced services. Uh, they want to see beautification, they want to see a a cleaner downtown, they want to see a safer downtown. Um, and um, you know, it takes a lot for a property owner to sign up for assessments. That they know are going to come out of their bottom line, um and they're, they're interested in that. Um, it's a coalition of people coming together that ultimately want, you know. Downtown to be the 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 dining room, the living room, the family room of our community. As a safe, clean place to gather. And um, that's what we have seen in other communities that have formed P bids. Um, you know, we've had a P bid in the past in downtown. Uh, this one is a um is a, the same geographical area, but the assessment is higher. And that's on purpose, because those property owners want a significant investment. And they want to leverage that investment to have impact, so I think you'll see cleaner sidewalks, you'll see. Um, you know, things addressed quickly. Um, you'll see, may, you know, maybe an expanded cadet program. Um, graffiti abatement, uh, gar- garbage cans emptied. Just general cleanliness um on things that the city is, as the downtown becomes busier. The city simply is not going to be able to, on its own, not going to be able to keep up with the demand. So the private sector is willing to step up and partner with the city to help meet that demand.
Um, thank you, uh, that was a real key statement, the city is not going to be able to keep up with the demand. Because the demand is is great there, so it sounds like. Um, and and maybe we can get that from that later, uh, you know, the improved. Revenue and traffic in the downtown area is is much greater right now, and and we need to respond to that. But ta- talk about safety one more time, I know you just said a couple of things about expanded cadet programs, but talk about safety. Why, why do you think that is important to the business owners, property owners?
Um. It's one of the major concerns we've heard from downtown property owners um around just making sure that. Residents and patrons and visitors feel safe in a downtown. Um, that uh there, it's, it's, and it, and clean and safe go together. Uh, if if an area is not clean, it looks rundown and it doesn't feel safe. In addition, if you have um people behaving badly. Um, uh, making noise, being disruptive in the parking garage, um littering. Um, committing small petty crimes, graffiti, uh, people feel unsafe, and they stop coming to to neighborhood. To downtowns, so the goal of the P bid is to increase that cleanliness and the safety. And make all the residents and the visitors feel safe. Um, and also for the employees that work downtown. Who leave uh their work late at night after working a shift at a restaurant or. Uh, business or hopefully are down to our hotel in the future. Um, they'll need to feel safe walking to their car late at night, these are important things that we need to be thinking about as we move forward.
Have you talked to the police chief about expanding the cadet program to um. Comply with the business owners relative to expanding the cadet program?
We have talked with the police chief, and he was in our first uh steering committee meeting, and we've continued to engage in conversations with Chief Paul's Grove. About um potential things we could be doing with the P bid to increase safety. Uh, and improve safety, it's around lighting, it's around security cameras, it's around expanding the cadet program. Um, there are several things that we can, we've been talking with the chief about, he has lots of ideas, he'd love to engage with the P bid about things that. Um, that he could do to partner with a P bid. Um, and we've had uh Captain Ramos out on a site visit. Uh, with the property owner talking about how the P bid could potentially engage with um the police department as well.
So this, this is really much more than the property owners and business owners. This really uh encompasses the whole community, you mentioned, uh, you know, a safe, clean place. Uh, for families, you know, it's their living room there, um, you know, a family room, you know. So this really could benefit a wider uh population other than the downtown businesses.
Well, ultimately, our 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 downtown is for all of our residents, right, it's like, it's a community gathering place, it's a, it's a place for our visitors to come to, and. And when somebody comes and visits your community, they often go to your downtown, so it is, it is the place where you're going to make an impression. Uh, so it has an impact, and when then somebody leaves your community, uh, hopefully, they're going to um. Tell all of their friends and family about the great experience downtown Morgan Hill, so um. It it impacts more than just the downtown property owners, um and the downtown businesses, it can have. Really, um, really a multiplier effect on um impacting our community.
So a- again, this P bid program is is wider than just the downtown businesses and property owners. This really is encompassing the whole community, it's a holistic approach to a safer, cleaner downtown.
There ultimately is a general benefit to the entire community, yes.
Thank you, Matt, uh, what what does the city spend in dollars in the downtown area within their property, their assessed property? Do you know that number?
Um. I went looking for that number earlier today, and I'm I'm gonna try not to put Chris Gianni on spot, but I think he might have a general number about how much money they spend. Um, on an annual basis in the downtown district, Chris.
If you give me just one minute, I'll have it, sorry.
Sorry, sorry about that, I went, I'm I'm traveling on business and I couldn't find it in my notes um earlier today. So I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Chris.
It it's okay, I'll have it in one second.
It it looks like you're right in the civic center area.
I I am not.
May I suggest that we continue moving and Chris can have time to look for that?
Okay, so I'm I'm almost finished with my questions, um, so uh, if if the P bid. Uh, will take up some or all of the twinkle lights and cadet, it's a savings for the city. And what's the likelihood, give me, give me your best guesstimate, you talked to everybody, I didn't, what's the best guesstimate of that?
I would say the likelihood is very, very high.
Give me a number, eighty percent, seventy five?
I I, council member, I, I'm not gonna give you a number, I.
Okay.
Get in trouble when I give wrong numbers.
No, and I appreciate that, thank you, I I didn't mean to put you on the spot, um, so what what is, what is the downside to this P bid?
Honestly, sir, um, I don't see a downside um to the P bid. At at this time, I think you have a unique opportunity, it's something that's been in the general plan, it's been in the economic development plan. Uh, you have um an economic development team who are both uh myself and Brittany Sherman, who are both experienced nonprofit. Um, executives, um, and a willingness to engage and be supportive. Uh, and you have a city team that I think wants to see this be successful, so I think the timing is is really good to move this forward.
Uh, thank you, man, I see Chris's hand raised.
It's about three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars um across everything we do from like uh maintenance. Um, including future replacement items for for the all the downtown parking lots, streetscapes, parks and everything in the downtown area.
Uh, but this P bid is not uh really involved with the parking structure and the two outside parking facilities. This is just the assessed value on property owners, so that three hundred thousand, okay, I. I I I was thinking something else, so um, well, I I guess my point is. I- in essence, this could save the city some money, even though we're expending some money uh into this assessed value. That was just a a a statement, and I'm finished my questions, thank you so much for your patience with me.
Thank you, Mayor Portem, with that, we will go ahead and and open up public comment on this item.
Our first speaker is Rosie Bergen.
Good evening, my name's Rosie Bergen, and we own the Rosies at the Beach property building. Um, the P bid provides a unique financial mechanism. That allows our district's property owners to accomplish more together than we could possibly. Accomplished separately. The the P bid is a great opportunity for our downtown, and I completely support. Everybody's involvement with it. I can't see a downside, so I support the P bid, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Baranowski.
Uh, yeah, hello again, yeah, let's go back four months, uh, like uh Mr. Borzioli suggested. At that time, the staff report was very specific as to what the P bid was all about. It, that staff report said, you know, that after spending six hundred thousand dollars on beautification. The staff didn't think they could achieve the wow factor. Now, I'm not making that terminology up, that was just the staff's terminology, and after listening to what I just heard, I can say that I'm wowed, really wowed. Um. And then, at that time, of course, it came to the consent calendar with absolutely no clue what it was going to cost the taxpayers. But eventually, um, Mr. Mahome um suggested that, Mr. Mayhood, I'm sorry, apologize. Mister suggested, well, last time it was a hundred thousand dollars, but this time it was gonna be a lot cheaper probably. And Mr. Borzioli chastised people who used a hundred thousand dollars, saying, didn't you hear him, we're gonna be a lot less than that. No, we're thirty five percent more than that. And what's really surprising is that every time he's asked, well, how are you gonna judge the success of this, I never heard the answer. I I mean, so I'm one of the property owners that I hope you ask me in a year from now whether I'm happy. The only way I would be happy is to say that that money produced a return on investment on the general fund revenue, it's really that simple. I don't think it will compared to other uses of that money. A hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, the downside is that money could be used a lot better for another reason, we always talk about. Uh, how many police officers a tax measure could buy, I think this hundred thirty five thousand dollars a year is about seventy two percent. Of a full time police officer, or, and you're gonna say, well, you don't get it, we're trying to raise money, so. of a full-time police officer. Or, and you're gonna say, well, you don't get it. We're trying to raise money so that we can get more police officers. You know, you approved a hotel incentive policy for something we don't need. We don't need more hotels. But we do need businesses in those empty buildings sitting on Butterfield. Why are they empty? We say we want high-tech and advanced manufacturing. You know, a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars a year um going towards a use tax incentive that would be applied to uh say, small businesses who uh commit to purchasing capital equipment that would be uh targeted for advanced manufacturing and R and D would certainly be a lot more uh of, of an idea of actually having a return on investment than um a wow factor. So this is just a poorly thought out use of money. I think it's going to be subjective um as the wow, any wow factor is, it's gonna be subjective to do uh, you know, however the staff feels like they wanna spend it. Um, in the four months that we learned, we, we spent looking at this, what we learned is that a hundred thousand dollars is now gonna be a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, people had questions then, you should have a lot more questions now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
And I have no other hands up, mayor. Uh, hold on, uh, one more just came up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff in, in public. I'm speaking here tonight as a business owner in the downtown district in support of the staff recommendation to adopt a resolution of intention to form the Morgan Hill Property and Business Improvement District. I would first like to provide some context for my recommendations that could serve as a means to a measurable index for accountability and performance. There are five areas. Identity, Morgan Hill, Morgan Hill Downtown District has an intris- intrinsic cultural significance that defines our brand by offering historical assets, culture, recreation, entertainment and participation in civic activities. The blend of old and new venues in Morgan Hill Downtown District provides a high quality of life that attracts employers, investors, visitors and residents. The formation of a PBIT correlation will serve to enhance and accelerate opportunities in each of these areas, which would not be attainable under the current structure. Inclusion, Morgan Hill Downtown provides access to opportunities and essential services for diverse users. Positioning downtown as a highly inclusive urban node of our community. Vibrancy, due to the higher density and expansive user base, Morgan Hills Downtown supports a vibrant variety of retail, infrastructure, institutional uses, which offers mutually reinforcing benefits to the city and our community. Resilience, the mixed-use nature of Morgan Hill Downtown allows for residential uses along commercial, alongside commercial connected by a variety of mobility options. And the last one is economy. Based upon the density of economic activity, Morgan Hill Downtown Investment provides a high-level return per acre foot of land invested. The formation of a PBIT model will highlight the role that downtown plays as a center of tax revenue generation, employment in commercial and residential real estate. In summary, the opportunity to create an effective and efficient private and public partnership model via the formation of the PBIT demonstrates the commitment of all property owners and operators to provide a sustainable, unified approach for services that the city cannot or not able to support by leveraging the collective strength of both resources and funding to accelerate business growth and an expansion of services benefiting the entire community of Morgan Hill. Thank you for your time.
I now have no more hands up.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And before I go to my colleagues for a discussion or action, I want to remind my colleagues, it's nine o'clock and we still have not gotten past the consent calendar. So I'm gonna ask that we be as succinct as possible. And with that, I will now go to Councilmember McKay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I also wanna thank uh Director Mayhood for that uh really good set of responses. Um, I talked to a lot of people about what's going on downtown and, and um, you know, it's it's a great place, but it could be better. And I think this is one way we could make it that better place. It could be cleaner. You know, there used to be a time we used to have flower baskets um hanging from the, the light, uh, the light poles. It'd be nice to see that kind of thing return. Um, I like the fact that basically this um PBIT could become the force multiplier, working with um the other organizations like the Downtown Association and, and the Chamber of Commerce. I think those would be great relationships and it maybe would help overcome some of the issues uh that we might have hosting events in our community. Downtown is the only place that, that we as a city can really influence uh from a business perspective. We can try to do the best we can to make it a good place. We can't tell people they have to come or they can't come. But I think that we can create a really nice place. And I think that as much as this isn't a, a city function, I think it's something that we should support because it will um help our community grow. I think that one of the things we forget about is, uh, we talk about parking. And I think that with the, the help of a PBIT and, and the other organizations, maybe we could start working on that parking because a lot of parking is taken up by city employee. Uh, the, the employees of the different businesses downtown, maybe we can make them feel a little bit safer parking a little further out. That's, you know, let, let's see where we can help everywhere we can. Um, I think it's incredibly bad idea to have a, a council member on, on any one of our uh boards, PBIT, uh, TBIT, any of those things. I think that that's just a recipe for disaster and, and um, and with that, I could keep on going, but I'm not. And I'm gonna say that I've moved to approve the resolution as presented in the staff package, which is the resolution of the City Council of, of the City of Morgan Hill declaring its intention to form the Morgan Hill Property and Business Improvement District. Thank you.
Second.
You have a motion as second for the discussion, Councilmember.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I, I will um say that, you know, this is downtown is great. And there's a lot of things that we need, but we also need to look at over ten years, this is one point three million dollars from our general fund, one point three million dollars from our general fund. And we have that, that as council or community will have no say over how those dollars are spent. Um, and I think, you know, the, it, the real issue that I have is that there's nowhere codified where it talks about a specific outline of the costs such as twinkle lights, the cadet program, maybe a shuttle for parking, graffiti cleanup, trash pickup. I mean, if we had, you know, I would feel much better about this if I had something that said, oh, council member, council, this is what we're gonna be using these monies for. But otherwise, we're signing a blank for one point three million dollars. And that is part of the concern that I have. Not, you know, of course it will help everybody working together, of course. And, and I think that that is great, but I, but that worries me. The other piece that really worries me is that we haven't even contacted all of the business owners who are in these properties because we all know that they're going to end up absorbing those costs. So, I mean, I'm sure that some of them could find lots of reasons to support that and others maybe won't support it. But informing them and giving them that information so that they can make business decisions. I think that's a really important piece that we have really missed and overlooked here. So these are some of the things that are concerning me. We have a major area of town on Monterey Corridor that needs to have investment. It is an extension of downtown. It will help us get to the tourism and the destination and the, the look and feel that we want to be with Visit Morgan Hill. But we've got to invest there as well on our neighboring corridor. And until we do that, I just feel like, you know, I explained to somebody earlier, it's like we keep redoing the kitchen. You know, and, and the bathrooms desperately need to be redone, but we just keep repainting the kitchen, redoing the kitchen. And our kitchen is beautiful. Yes, we need some help somewhere, but I'm sure if we were to look at things, you know, let's get some of this other Monterey Corridor to help these three or four blocks that we have. Um, I think we would reap that benefit a lot more as a city. And so those are some of the concerns that I have when I'm looking at this. And that's speaking to Mr. McKay's uh motion. Thank you.
Hey, hey, Councilmember, Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Spring.
Thank you, mayor. I, I didn't expect a, a, a repeat of the, uh, our March meeting where we talked about PBIT. Uh, but, but a- anyhow, the uh, uh, what, what I learned since then hasn't convinced me that this is really a great idea. I, as I mentioned back in March, it has major flaws. Uh, it, it doesn't include all the properties. I, it makes a major exclusions and I, I think that is a mistake. Uh, I don't understand why it wouldn't include all the properties, including vacant lots and so on. Uh, i- if it's really about the, uh, uh, getting funds, then, then that, everything should be included. And, and, and barely getting over fifty percent of private property owners to, to liking the idea. Uh, it's just another proof that, that they're not crazy about the idea either. Uh, I, I think a PBIT it usually is a much stronger tool when, when you don't have a lot of uh, city properties involved. But here, uh, the city is, 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 is a key stakeholder. Uh, a- and, and to me, that's kind, kind of a flaw of this whole concept. And uh, cause that, that also means uh it's a ma- major payer into the PBIT. Uh, and, and, and that likely will lead to double dipping and, 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 and us just, just eventually uh putting even more money downtown only than we already did in the past. And then, and just over the past, I don't know, ten, fifteen years, we spent twenty plus millions downtown. Uh, just to remind everyone, uh, it's a huge amount of money that we invested downtown. Uh, we all love downtown, but I, I just I, 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 I am not sold of this idea. I, 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 I don't share the optimism that this is a wonderful idea. I, I, I fear that that the city will continue to have to pay for improvements downtown on top of uh, the, the assessment for a PBIT. And, and, and that part I do not like. Again, we, we need to, to look at it in the context uh, from spending our money across the city equally and not just in one location. Uh, it, it's very typical again that primarily the, some business owners are in favor of, of, of this and I, for reasons that totally make sense, they do benefit the most uh without the, paying the largest amounts. Uh, and, and, and a lot of the, the other property owners are ob- obviously not so crazy about this concept, including some very well-known uh owners, I uh, that we all have spoken to uh in the past as well. Uh, so I, I am still not convinced. I, I wouldn't have pulled it. Uh, I just wanted to be recorded on a no vote and I still you know, no vote after tonight's discussion.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. And with that, why don't we go ahead and have a vote?
Before Michelle calls the rule, I just wanna clarify that, that, that the motion uh that Mr. McKay read was the staff recommendation. Um, he, he read the first part, but that necessarily includes the second part.
Okay, thank you very much. Roll call vote please.
Mayor, can you make an amendment to that?
Uh, you, no, you, you had your opportunity. I, I mean.
So I can't make an, an amendment to the motion?
The question's been called, so like, that's usually the, that's up to the council to.
Substitute motion.
Well, at this point, the question's been called, Councilmember.
That's fine. But I'm, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
So when, when the question is called, that means we have to go to a vote?
Okay, then I'm forced to vote a certain way. Sure, let's go to a vote.
Well, continuation of the roll call vote please.
Mayor Constantine?
Hi.
Councilmembers Borzioli?
Hi.
Spring?
No.
Martinez Beltran?
No.
McKay?
Hi.
Okay, then motion passes three, two. I have been asked to take a five-minute break, so we will come back at nine fifteen. Okay, then motion passes three, two. I have been asked to take a five-minute break, so we will come back at nine fifteen. Okay, it is nine fifteen. We are going to move now to consent counter item four, which is to approve the parcel map and related subdivision improvement agreement and subsequent development reimbursement agreement for the Redwood Tech at one-on-one project. Who is going to give us that report?
City Attorney Don Larkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a very straightforward and simple issue. The task for the council tonight is a ministerial approval. It's unless the council can find by preponderance of the evidence that the final map is not in substantial compliance with the previously approved tentative map, council is required to approve the staff recommendations. Um, that, that's really as simple as does this map conform to the tentative map that the council or that the city has already approved?
Uh, Ms. Larkin, I know you basically just gave us the definition of ministerial, but could you give us the rudimentary uh, definition of ministerial so we're all on the same page?
If all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed, the council has no option other than to approve the staff recommendation.
Thank you very much for that clarification. With that, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. Councilmember Mark is about wrong.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Don, uh, in reading through the staff report and you've looked at this, um, project before, you, staff has determined that the parcel map has complied with all of the relevant requirements and conditions that were placed upon them.
Of the tentative map. So there are still conditions remaining on the project, but you're only here tonight to talk about the final map, the final parcel map.
Right. And everything's been met on the tentative map.
That is correct.
Okay. So then the only opportunity really here is to comment on the um, analysis, the traffic analysis that was done. And it seems that there was an opportunity missed to, um, look at the traffic coming on with that Redwood Tech and in Cochrane Commons, uh, project that's coming on as well. Um, in December twenty twenty-one, a VMT analysis was done as required by the E R R uh, for, for service analysis, but it doesn't assume any new traffic coming from Red, uh, Redwood Tech and from the Tramal Crowe project there. So I would like, you know, to keep that in mind. Also, we're going to be having that.
I'm sorry, council, council member, are, are, do you have any, uh, specific questions? You, you can go to comment after I've gone to public comment on this.
Sure. Sure. Are we going to be able to, um, have a traffic um, analysis done and part of that Redwood Tech, the housing piece of it? Will there be, will there be an opportunity to have, um, an analysis be done on that?
So I think, I think you're conflating different things. Um, there is no traffic analysis required for approval of the.
Not through CEQA, but through the general plan.
No, 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 there's no traffic analysis. Yeah, there's no traffic analysis required as part of, as a condition of the tenant map. That's a condition of CEQA. At the, um, and that will come later. There is no housing as part of Redwood Tech. Um, so there's no traffic analysis associated with that, but there will be um, CEQA associated with the Dividend Homes Project that's to the east of the southeast of the Redwood Tech project. So, so there, there are opportunities for review, for traffic studies and traffic review, but that wasn't a condition of the tentative map. So that's not part of what's before the council today.
Okay, but there will be opportunities for us to look at that being done with both Cochrane Commons and with this dividend project.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing other hands going up, then I'll go ahead and go to public comment.
I don't have any hats up, Mayor.
Okay, with that.
Oh, uh, a bunch of hands just popped up.
Okay.
Uh, the first is Miguel Jimenez.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, again.
And my wife rose my hand too. Hopefully it's okay if she just goes after me on the same, uh, platform, same, uh.
As long as it's within your three-minute window.
But, okay, well, then she'll go on her own device. Okay, good evening. The Morgan Hill zoning code clearly states to approve a design permit, a number of findings must be made. Two of the requirements are, one, the proposed project has been reviewed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Two, the proposed development will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. On May twenty-fifth of last year, the Redwood at one-on-one project was being discussed at a planning commission meeting. The city staff informed the planning commission that these requirements were satisfied with the Morgan Hill Environmental Impact Report associated with the Morgan Hill twenty thirty-five general plan. Now, how would a person in a decision-making or voting capacity make a determination if that was the case? Planning Commissioner Mueller, who voted no on the project, made a very reasonable and logical request. He asked for the data and what was analyzed in the noted program E I R associated with the Morgan Hill twenty thirty-five general plan to see if these SECO requirements were met as it related to the Redwood at one-on-one project. Commissioner Mueller's requests could not be satisfied since the E I R associated with the Morgan Hill twenty thirty-five general plan did not evaluate any specific projects. In fact, the document specifically states in section two point two under the header E I R scope on page thirty-eight and I quote, as a program E I R, it is not project-specific and does not evaluate the impacts of individual projects that may be proposed under the general plan. Such subsequent projects will require a separate environmental review when applicable as required by CEQA. This E I R is not intended to address project-specific impacts of individual projects. Now ask yourselves, does it make sense to come to the conclusion that the California Environmental Quality Act requirement was satisfied for the Redwood at, what, Redwood at, at one-on-one project with a document, the Morgan Hill twenty thirty-five general plan program E I R that clearly states it's not intended for specific projects? My wife will continue our public comments on her own device.
Our next speaker is Joe Baranowski.
Uh, it's unfortunate, we just couldn't let them go in that order, but um, let me be clear, um, city attorney, I'm not conflating anything and neither are my colleagues that are speaking tonight. Um, and, and nothing's simple, right? We have three members on the council who are running for reelection. And we, um, some of them want to just conveniently, um, uh, act like they had never made this decision. Um, when I quote, it's going to be from a two hundred fourteen-page report from the law firm Adams-Broadwell-Josem Cardoza. Um, quote, there is no basis for a claim that this project was somehow analyzed in the twenty thirty-five general plan E I R. And the author, the main author of that report fully debunks that bogus claim. And you can wave your hands all you want, like you did back then, and misleading the public is only way you can get to that claim. Now, I want to be clear. The authors also stated that the project, the Redwood Tech project, is going to generate six thousand and forty daily trips, eight hundred eighteen peak AM and six twenty-nine PM peak hour. And whether or not you want to wave your hands about CEQA or not CEQA, he noted that the peak hour trip totals far exceed both the city and the V T A guidelines where a transportation impact report becomes required. Those limits are one hundred new peak hour trips. And that doesn't revolve around any C U P or future things, you know, that we were promised back then. It assumes that the facility is going to be used exactly as the developer is claiming that it will be. There was a traffic impact analysis that was required by our general plan. It was ignored by this city council, by everyone who voted for it, including you, Mr. McKay. And you want to call that silly? It's not silly. Now, the, the author goes on to say, this however, ignore, some people want to argue that none of this matters because CEQA has transitioned to V M T for transportation now. This ignores explicit policy stated in the city's twenty-five thirty-five general plan that the city continues to use LOS to evaluate impacts to transportation. Okay? Don't, don't wave your arms about CEQA on me. Okay? So now we fast forward, Cochrane Commons did do a traffic impact analysis. I don't know why. I'm sure the developer just didn't say, hey, I want to pay for extra. So maybe the city actually is treating Tramal Crowe one way and every other developer another way. That project will also generate more than a hundred new peak hour trips. They paid for a traffic impact analysis. The only problem is it's completely irrelevant. The city and our good friends Hexagon, people who brought us Tramal Crowe, I mean, Shoe Palace with a sham traffic analysis and why they continue to use them for anything is beyond me. They assumed that Tramal Crowe Redwood just doesn't exist. Just close your eyes and pretend it doesn't exist. All the hand-waving about the twenty thirty-five general plan back all over again. That project has not been approved. It hasn't come to the planning commission. The city needs to require Hexagon to go back and redo the analysis. You're throwing more than approximately sixteen thousand new trips at that, in that neighborhood. What do you think is going to happen? What do you think is really going to happen? You're going to collapse the transportation there. People are going to be spending twenty minutes to get from Redwood to Mission Ranch. Come on.
Our next speaker is Will Parker.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is Will Parker with Tramal Pro Company, representing ownership. Um, but I'd like to make a few brief comments and I've also asked David Blackwell from a land use, uh, council perspective to comment in a moment and, um, he's logged in separately. Uh, our, our team has been working in this community for several years on this and other projects. Um, we believe in Morgan Hill and we hope that that's very clear and has come through in our time and, and substantial investments here in the community. Uh, during our ownership, this project went through an extremely robust, collaborative, sometimes challenging, but thoughtful process. And that resulted in approval last year. And it was not without meaningful changes included versus the concepts. If you recall, it is about half the size. It has smaller buildings. It has restrictions in place that speak to concerns expressed during the approval process. We also believe this project speaks powerfully to Silicon Valley companies that we all want to see occupy. We, we have high confidence in that. The importance of that message was received by us loud and clear. Sharing a, a sidebar, um, from our team, a goal on this project is to exceed the standard of other projects we have been fortunate to work on. And I, I think that's a strong statement. Our project in this community on Butterfield this week just received an award as Silicon Valley's top industrial development. That's good. It puts Silicon Valley companies on notice. I think it helps position Morgan Hill as a real option for them versus other locations who very much want the same businesses and jobs. In addition, uh, the, please also recognize the hundreds of construction jobs, including with the local trades that this project supports right away. So, um, in conclusion, we're excited about this and to deliver a high-quality project is truly what this is. Thank you very much. Um, that concludes my comments. If possible, I'd like to hand it to David Blackwell to share his. Thanks.
He has fifty-six seconds, otherwise it's going his own time. All right, with that, we'll go with the next speaker, please.
Suzie Jimenez?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. We want to highlight some correspondence between the city and the project applicant. In a letter dated January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, from the city of Morgan Hill to the Redwood at one-on-one applicant, page three states under the environmental clearance section, quote, although your application is consistent with the existing zoning and general plan designation of the site, a tentative map that is five or more parcels requires environmental clearance and CEQA review. Therefore, once you confirm that five lots are being applied for, staff will initiate the process of securing a scope and budget from one of our environmental consultants for preparation of an appropriate environmental review document for the map, end of quote. The applicant responded in a letter dated February first, two thousand twenty-one, page eight, end quote, the project will proceed with a four-lot parcel map instead of the five lots originally proposed. The revised tentative map with this submittal now has four lots, end of quote. This communication between the city and applicant, coupled with the conclusion that the Redwood at one-on-one project CEQA requirement was satisfied with the Morgan Hill two thousand thirty-five program E I R that states, quote, not intended to address project-specific impacts, end of quote, does not instill confidence with the community that the city and project applicant are working together to make sure that CEQA is being adhered to and that the Redwood at one-on-one developments will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of the community. We simply ask the developer to take responsibility to evaluate the potential health, safety, and environmental impacts of their proposed project. We ask the city to hold the developer accountable and protect our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, in regards to Mr. and Mrs. Jimenez, I want to ask staff, uh, it, they basically read from their email that they sent us and it wasn't included in the update. So I wanted to make sure if staff has not gotten that email, uh, we could include it, let me know and I, we can include it in this agenda item, but the last time I updated, it wasn't there. So we'll take that offline, uh, further. So with that, we'll go to the next speaker, please.
David Blackwell?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Constantine and members of the council. My name is David Blackwell. I'm a land use partner with the Allen Mackens Firm in San Francisco. Your, your city attorney adequately and fully defined the scope of what this proceeding is and what is not. This is not a vesting tentative map approval. We went through that back in June of last year where the, this council approved the vesting ten of parcel map as well, design permit, and made a CEQA determination. That was the time if anyone had issues with regard to this, the council's decision, including its CEQA determination, to have filed a lawsuit within the statute of limitations, including Adams-Broadwell, who didn't, not only did they not file a lawsuit, they actually withdrew their appeal. So no one filed a lawsuit. Therefore, that decision, all the CEQA work relating to this project, it cannot be revisited by anybody. That's simply the law. There's, there's, so any discussions from what I'm hearing tonight about CEQA is, is simply irrelevant. This is a ministerial approval. As Mr. Larkin noted, ministerial approvals by law do not involve CEQA. They do not trigger CEQA. So this is purely a, is a check-the-box decision and you're, and under the subdivision map act, the decision-making process here is very, very focused and very limited. As, as Mr. Larkin noted, it's, it's only does the final map substantially conform to the, to the tentative map and staff has found that it does. So there's, honestly, there's no possible outcome tonight other than approving this prod, approving this final, this parcel map. And that's all I have at this juncture. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Oxlon.
So again, following up on the winner's side.
Okay. Is that it, Madam, uh, City Clerk?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and close public comment and move to, uh, council action or discussion. Councilmember Mark is about wrong.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank the applicants for coming and, um, coming to a consent item. I want to thank the public for commenting and sharing their comments. coming to a consent item. I want to thank the public for commenting and sharing their comments. I hope that in the future we'll change, uh, you know, in allowing people to share the line. Um, and I will also, yes, Tramco, you have gone through the process and you have, as our staff has said, met the requirements. However, we still do, we still do have the right to go ahead and have conversation. I understand your position. I respect it, but um, we can now go ahead and move to approve this item.
Are you making a motion, councilmember?
I am.
Yeah, this, this emotion is. Okay, a second by Councilmember McKay. Councilmember McKay, you have comment?
Yeah, um. Well, I, I, I do believe that the attorney came on, took a little bit of my thunder away, and that is that, um, we did have an opportunity for the community to, um, come forward and file suit. And, uh, they didn't. And, and there's a reason. That's because they were wrong. And we knew it, uh, from the very beginning, um, but they insist on continuing to just pound away on this. And, um, you know, I, I, we, this started a long time ago. Couple of years ago, former member, former council member Larry Carr and I attended a meeting and uh, that was a time when this group was saying that there were going to be eight thousand truck trips a day. And then it kind of over time kind of evolved and got lower and lower. And we were kind of astounded because I was thinking, you know, that, that would be more than the port of Oakland. But you know, that is the kind of tactic. And then you've also heard a few more of them tonight with their, with their remarks, which were inappropriate, but it's not unusual for this group. They have been attacking, uh, a couple of us regularly on social media and they don't know bounds. And, um, I think that's really important. This community understands that, um, we take our job seriously. Um, I didn't say anything.
Allow those allegations against the public. These citizens didn't have anything to do with these scrupulous people who were calling in. And I'm sorry, councilmember McKay, that they.
My time being, my time's being held, right?
Yes, your time is being held. Um, and, uh, councilmember, you, you, you're, you're very close. I, I was going to, to, to jump in, uh, if you could, uh, be more general. That's probably the best way I could put it.
Yeah, well, uh, we, we've heard and it's been going on. It's, uh, uh, tonight I heard six thousand, sixteen thousand to six thousand trips a day. And that, that basically breaks down to eleven trips a second. Or on the lower end, four trips per second. That's just unimaginable. You would even see that many cars. You, you can't, you can't see. So a lot of claims are being made, and I think it's a shame that our community does this. And I think that, um, I, I, I just hope that we start to turn this, the dialogue in our community around. And we let people know that we are welcoming business and that when we do it, we do it the right way. We do it legally. And, um, we, we want, we want our city to grow in the best way possible. So with that, you know, I did second the motion and I will continue to support this because I do believe, um, we've met all the, they've met all the requirements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Spring.
Hi, again, I didn't expect a long discussion either on this one, but, uh, I, I never supported this project from day one. I think the appeal, uh, of the planning commission's decision would have been the right action. I think it would be in trust. Uh, the council majority, uh, decided not to, to go down that path. Uh, Mr. Blackwell really rubbed me the wrong way tonight, uh, with, with his comments. I am sorry to say that. Uh, just because community, community members don't sue a, a company that has tons of money such, such as this one, uh, that doesn't make it right. Doesn't mean, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the project or everything was done the right way. Uh, uh, he's, one of, uh, one of the five of us disagrees that, that we did it the right way all along. And, and, and I, I truly think, uh, uh, we have been overly generous with, uh, with regards to this, company and this project as a city, uh, that includes, uh, now those credits that the reimbursement credits. I looked at it. We're talking about, uh, uh, over half a million, around half a million of credits now being given back uh, that I don't really understand either why we're so overly generous. Uh, I'm not going to question all the details, but, uh, there will be a no vote tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Porten.
Yes, Mayor, I, I, I just want to make a point. Uh, you know, we, we have the right to call out when, uh, a, a member of the council violates the norms. Um, you know, interrupting another council member during his X time is just inappropriate. If, if you want to do a point of order, do a point of order, but interrupting a council member is a no-no. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Porten. Your points, we'll take it. And I'll take this opportunity and I don't want anyone's feelings to be hurt. But I want to remind my colleagues that it is very important that we remain, uh, or we keep the decorum of this council. And to Mayor Porten's point, that we do not interrupt our fellow council members. And also that our fellow council members don't disparage the remarks of the public. The public has every right to disagree or agree with what they see going on in their city. And it doesn't do us any good to, uh, argue with that. So I want to, again, I, I hope I am not hurting anyone's feelings, but I think this needs to be said that we need to continue the decorum of this council as it's been done in the past, and I don't want to see that deteriorate. So with that, seeing no other hands up for comments or questions, I'm going to go ahead and call the question, please.
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmembers Borgioli?
Aye.
Spring?
No.
Martinez-Beltrane?
Aye, and I apologize for interrupting you, councilmember McKay.
McKay.
Aye, thank you. That's what I like to see. There we go. All right. Okay, now we're moving on to item five, which is to approve the consult consultant service agreement with Jason Architecture for the conceptual design planning for Via Miramonte expansion. Councilmember Martinez-Beltrane, you wanted to report, is that correct?
Yes, please, Mayor.
And I see Mr. Gianni's, uh, I always say light, but it's your, your window opening up or your camera turning on. Let's put it that way.
Good evening, uh, Mayor. Councilmembers Chris Gianni, Public Services Director. Uh, this item, um, we're bringing forward an opportunity for the council to award an architectural services contract to, uh, Jason Architects for, um, the space planning, concept designs, and cost estimates for, um, the Villa Miramonte site. The, um, the Villa Miramonte site is owned and operated by the Historical Society, but the ownership has a fallback clause to the city of Morgan Hill if the nonprofit goes anywhere. Um, so, so since two thousand seventeen, we've been working in partnership with, uh, close partnership, um, with, um, the Historical Society on their operations of the site and the, the future planning. Um, our two thousand seventeen Parks and Recreation Master Plan identified the expansion of the Villa Miramonte site, and it was identified, um, with funding, um, through our Recreation Center Impact Fund in our capital improvement program for the potential use to expand the, the site. This contract is just, um, really the first, uh, phase of that. And would, we would bring, uh, Jason Architects onboard to, um, to do that work. And, um, we, we, at the conclusion of, um, the agreement with them, we would have updated concepts and, um, would be working on environmental review for the, um, expansion of the site. As, uh, the council is aware, much of the site is undeveloped. And so, um, the focus would be on that undeveloped portion, but it would integrate with potential improvements on the existing site. Any of those improvements are to be, um, determined. Um, and you know, final design and any future funding would come back to the council for approval. If there are, um, questions, I'd be happy to take in. I'd also note that Abraham, uh, Jason, um, is available if you had questions specifically for the architect, and we would move him over on Zoom if you do.
Okay, with that, I will ask, may there's any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Martinez-Beltrane?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, first of all, uh, Chris, what is the, what is the whole scope of this expansion project? It was supposedly going to be for an event center and now it's something else.
Uh, yeah, if you, if you recall, um, the city, we did a feasibility study and it's really to enhance and build out the historical value of the site while incorporating, um, you know, the, um, a, a site that would, could be, um, operated, managed, uh, as efficiently as possible from a fiscal perspective, um, but not, not an event venue.
Okay, and this was in twenty seventeen, you said, as part of the.
Master plan was twenty seventeen. I believe it was twenty nineteen. Let me actually pull it up. I don't want to guess.
Well, same here in the staff report, twenty seventeen.
Uh, twenty seventeen was for the master plan and then we were, we, that came to the council in, um, twenty twenty with that analysis on using the site as a future event venue.
Which didn't, that didn't move forward though, right?
Uh, no, it wasn't a move forward or not. It was how we were going to face the future of the site. So that informed our decision on how we were going to move forward with the site. It wasn't a plan to build an event venue. It was just, um, the, the actual feasibility of using it is that.
Okay, um, and you say that this would be, the funds would be from the Recreation Impact Fund, which is able to be used for other recreational uses?
Um, for new construction of, uh, parks, recs, community center facilities.
For example, the ball field?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um. And then, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to find out the, the high-speed rail. We've heard many times the Historical Society's come to our meetings saying that the high-speed rail would tear through their site. Um, can you comment on that?
Uh, it would not impact their site and their property based on the, on the alignments we have. It would go right next to it though, in the existing, um, UPRR right away. So it would go next to their site, but it would not tear through the site.
Okay, um, and then has there been any kind of community meeting or anything on what the expansion? Realize it's not going to be the event center, what that will actually house, what historical elements that's going to be?
Uh, there's not been a community meeting, but this, uh, the scope of this, um, project has multiple community meetings as well as, uh, with the, uh, meetings with the Historical Society as well as councils and commissions. So there's a lot of public engagement involved in this scope.
Okay, um, I, you know, I'm looking at this and this was all happening before we got into COVID. When I did look at the meeting where this came up, this was where we had scratched and axed a bunch of projects and, um, things that we were working on to try and meet our budget. I'm just not sure. You know, the, the timing has definitely changed in the past five years, but I'll have more comments after. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Spring.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gianni, a couple of questions might, I think, if, if that contract were to get awarded tonight, what, what, what artifact, what outcome do you expect? What, what are they going to do for three hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, they're gonna, they're gonna do all the initial, um, designs for a site as well as the, um, space planning and assist with the public engagement on figuring out, um, exactly, um, what can be um, built there and, um, how we would build it, provide us cost estimates, um, and, uh, basically do, uh, where we get to concept designs, which is the, the first phase you do before you could start moving into full design. So, once we get the concept design, when they finish, that's basically the design that says, you know, kind of our real final look, like the council would say, this is where we want to go before we spend the money to really hand it to the designers and finish all the designs and move it forward for bidding. So this would get us to all the renderings, site planning, um, you know, all the, you know, the, the things that we need to do to prepare, geotechnical reports, topographic studies, and then, um, get us to that concept design point for evaluation and then move us would be, have us ready to move through, through the Sequa process.
So, so that is not very specific for me. What, what specifically can you give me a couple of examples of, of what, what could end up being on that site?
Like what could be built?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yes, sorry. I didn't understand the question. Um, yeah, I, I mean, the things that have been talked about is a uh, restroom facility for the site, which is lacking, um, to support that it being a park site as well as the, you know, visits and everything. There's no strong restroom site. It could be, um, a room for the collections, um, to be stored, uh, a potential meeting room to uh, work with school groups and those sort of things in the meeting room. It could be, uh, different types of historical gardens. It could be, um, you know, different, uh, a big part of it potentially parking areas, um, permanent parking space, um, improved driveways, um, things of that nature. But, but a lot of that scope would come through this design.
Okay, the, the, you know, when we had talked and somehow I missed the piece when, when it got dropped, the, the, you're no longer looking into it as an event, eh, space. Uh, I always thought that was the whole concept when, when the city started working more closely with the Historical Society. And to me, that made, made a lot of sense because there is not a lot in that part of, of our city, right? Uh, and I was kind of, I, I was looking forward to, to, to that. And I, I, I don't know if I, if I was in COVID funk or something, but I totally missed that piece that, that we changed the focus now. Uh, and, and now, now I'm not clear what the focus is anymore. I, I, I can't picture it anymore.
Well, to, to be clear, there could still be events there. There, there, there were some significant problems in trying to create a larger event space because there's not enough space for parking and building stuff. And that, and that is what we, um, and that is what we discovered through the study. So they would still host events there and they would still host school groups and still be able to hold smaller events. But when we talked about events, it was really building an event venue where you could have hundreds and hundreds of people at once, but there's just not enough space. And there, and when we did the analysis for, uh, small-sized event venue to try and reach cost recovery, there, there wasn't the, the need for it, um, to, to have that size of a venue. There, there, there wasn't the, there wouldn't be the demand. So there still will be weddings there. There still can be smaller events. It's just not growing it to a larger event venue because there's not space or demand.
I guess, so, okay, that, that makes me feel a, a little bit better again. The, the, uh, because the, kind of the, the summary of the report kind of, of moves away from events pretty much, and that's why I'm asking. Uh, but, but I, I also remember when we had, when we started a discussion with the Historical Society, a lot of, uh, about, or a lot of their requests were really, you know, improving the Villa Miramonte building, uh, and, and whether it's, uh, improving the kitchen and, uh, adding repairs and so on. Is that part of this or, or is that a totally different? Um, check.
That, that was some, that was projects they have been working on over the last several years doing some of those repairs, direct repairs. Um, there could be some components identified in the concept planning for improvements to the existing facilities. And those would have to be looked at how we would prioritize them and how they would fit, but that, that could be looked at.
Yeah, so, so I, I remember, I think the storage room came up as well, as, I'm not totally mistaken that, that the kitchen or improvement to the kitchen. Uh, and, and now are those different project or is that part of this project?
Um, I think some of that is to be determined through this project. Like, does the, is there a multipurpose room that's a storage room come with, uh, smaller kitchen in it? Or is that left in the main room and upgraded? Things like that would all be reviewed through this project and this, and the communication with, you know, the Historical Society, the community, and the commissions and the council.
Okay, and, and, and you, you know, the, where I see where, where, where this location could play an important role is really in, in, in providing historical education, right? And I'm not talking, starting with Diana Murphy. I'm talking about way, way back, right? Uh, uh, there were people in this area long before that time, but, but and, and, and that requires a certain, uh, infrastructure too, including possibly, uh, uh, you know, a classroom and so on. Uh, whether it's indoor or outdoors, i- is that part of, 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 of what you have in mind as well, or am I totally off here?
I think there's a multipurpose room that would be a key part of. I think there's a multipurpose room that would be a key part of all that, and I think. To your comments, you will have an opportunity to provide these comments, not just to the historical society, but to the architects ourselves and to. Share that kinda input and, uh, you know, taking notes right now, but I know, um, that, that's part of this process too.
Okay, so it's a part of the three hundred thousand dollars, i- i- is that they would guide the process. To gather requirements and, 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 and then translate that into something fantastic that in, 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 in that part of town where we, we lack. The fantastic things.
Yes, we have some fantastic things over in that part of town, but we can always, uh, use something on the city side that's fantastic.
Okay, okay, thank you, those are all my questions, appreciate your answers, Chris.
And council member, council member Martinez Beltran, I see your hands up, but you had already given up your time, do you have a quick question? Okay, thank.
I did, I, I, I do have another two questions.
Well, you, you, you had your time, I don't know how much time you had left because you had time and you said you were done asking questions. And we haven't gone to the public yet for, for comment, so if you have a couple of questions, I would, I'm gonna ask you to please be fast.
Sure, I guess the first one is, um, you know, Chris. Looking at where we're at right now, a three hundred thousand dollar project, we can't, we still don't have funding for a magical bridge. We've got, um, you know, some other projects that are coming up. I'm trying to understand, do we, how, how do you see this working out and making sense budget-wise for us? This is something that we decided that came about way before covid ever even was known about.
Um, well, the, the fundings in the C I P and the other items funded in there are the. Condit Road Facility Development, um, that, that's in there, that's been in there as well, and there's timing over the years, it shows the dollar amounts in the fund. Um, available, so, um, the council could choose to not move forward with this project and prioritize something else. You could postpone moving forward with this, um, but the available funding and the plan is outlined in the capital improvement program.
Great, thank you for that answer, and councilor, please be a little bit more succinct in your last question.
Okay, and with the C I P, we would be able to go ahead and review that again, whether or not this is included in that. Because when I looked back at the staff report, this said it would be after twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
So, uh, if you move forward with the, um, agreement that this contract work will get done. Any future phases of, uh, you know, final design or construction, uh, would. Not be done without council approval and even if moving forward or not moving forward, you can adjust the C I P at. Uh, the mid-cycle if desired.
So if we wanna make sure that we're not, that we have a better idea of what's going on, we would have to not vote for it now then, sounds like, is what you're saying?
I, I can, I can show you the C I P for the Rec Impact Fund if you'd like to see that right now, um, but. Um, so I, and I can walk through that.
Okay, I got my answer, thank you.
All right, with that, we'll go to members of the public.
Joe Bernowski.
Yes, hello again, you know, um, consent items are supposed to be, uh, for routine items. That don't require discussion, and, um, you know, mayor, um, you don't have to tell me that. You're not hiding anything, I'm not suggesting you are. Um, you don't have to tell me that, well, we're talking about it, so what's the big deal? But I, I do wonder, um, how items that are a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of public funding. And three hundred thousand dollars of public funding, uh, could ever be considered routine? And not expecting to need any discussion, I think that sets a really bad, bad example to the public. Um, I, I have a question, I hope somebody could answer, um, I wonder how many u- unique visitors per year the current facility has? Um, I love Morgan Hill, I love Morgan Hill, uh, history, um, I've never been there and I don't know anyone that's, that else that's ever been there. Doesn't mean anything, um, I know a lot of people that have been to many other, uh, facilities that could use, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. And lastly, let me be very clear, neither myself. Nor my colleagues that spoke tonight, nor anyone from the Morgan Hill Responsible Growth Coalition, had any knowledge or would ever. Participate in the vile remarks that were said tonight, and for somebody to suggest that you heard from them tonight. Is really, really inappropriate, we have devoted thousands of hours of our personal time. Because we believe in the city, and for Mr. McKay to suggest that we somehow were involved in those vile remarks. It's a new low point, thank you.
Thank you, mayor, I have no other hands up.
All right, thank you very much, okay, with that, I will go ahead and open it for council discussion or action. And it is, I'll remind my colleagues, it is two minutes after ten.
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilor Spring, second, uh, any just further discussion, council member Martinez Beltran, please be succinct. And you're muted.
Sorry about that, um, I do not support this, I think that we, we don't even know, this is from five years ago. We don't have any idea really what's going on there, I think the historical society is a gem in that area. I would be supportive of doing something that had, you know, a, a, a solid plan to it. But something that's resurrected from twenty seventeen and we see it as a consent item after we've gone through covid. If you'll remember when we gave a hundred thousand dollars to not-for-profits, that was a very big deal. And here we're talking about three thou- three hundred thousand dollars to scope something we haven't talked about. Um, when the world was different, it just, it doesn't make sense where we're investing our monies. Um, when construction is probably at one of the highest rates it's been. I think if we're going to be spending this money, I understand that there, the historical society has just expanded their board. Which I think is great, but I do think that the city needs to partner with that expansion of the board and be much more involved in what that board looks like. It should be diverse, it should be reflecting the community and have a process where people can apply. That is public, where, um, where everybody knows when board openings are and who might be able to participate in it. Um, you know, I understand that, you know, to these, we just had this installation of new. Board members, I'm told, and do they even know what's going on? Ten new board members, which is larger than what the board was before, of what this project is. If I don't even have any understanding of it, this is the first I'm seeing, I mean, they just came on. And I understand there's board member who's been on there and didn't even know about this project. So I'm very concerned about us moving forward and investing this kind of money, um, and so that's. That's why I think that we need to under, is it restroom, is it a, you know, is it for? Um, it really should be, I mean, are we increasing the diversity where we have somewhere that's gonna highlight? Uh, the more diverse areas of Morgan Hill, um, I think those are the things that we need to understand. Before we're dedicating three hundred thousand dollars to it, so I am not able to support this now. Um, and I won't be voting in favor of the motion.
Thank you, just so you're, just so you're aware, the, the three hundred thousand has already been approved in the C I P, this is just to approve the agreement, just so.
I understand, but that three hundred thousand could be used for another recreation project that we have been working on.
I understand.
Fields or anything else for our kids.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor McKay, and I'd also ask you, please be succinct.
Oh, yeah, thank you, no problem, um, well, first of all, um, I, I think it's a good idea that we continue to invest in, in what has been a real. Um, a gem of our community, um, I, I go there regularly, I, I know lots of people do, and I. And I think it's something that we owe to the future of our community, so I think it's a good investment, um, I also wanna say that. Um, I think that, uh, Councilman Martinez Beltran will be very happy with the makeup of the new board, I have been. Uh, told, um, a little bit about who they are, and I, I think it's actually gonna be a good thing, and I think that. Is one of the things that will help create the longevity that we need, uh, on the board, um, to make good decisions. Um, and use these funds, uh, which are already committed, uh, routinely. And, and the last, my last point is, I, I apologize if I made too broad a statement, um, earlier. Um, I don't wanna get too specific, but I, I do apologize if I offended the wrong folks, but, um. Uh, there'll, there'll be something I'll work on, and I'm sure it won't happen again, thank you very much.
Thank you, council member for that, and I appreciate that, council member Spring, I won't, I won't say it for the third time.
Please don't, to, to, but I'll keep it short, but the, I, I completely understand where my colleague, uh, Martinez Beltran is coming from. And I share the concerns, uh, uh, we, we need to become more diverse when we talk about, uh, the history of our town. And, and that is the job and, and has to be the mission of the historical society, and it has to be reflected. In, in the board members and, and the projects they support, but for me, uh, but, what we're talking about tonight is really. Uh, a, a way to get to hopefully a wonderful project that meets the, the various needs of, 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 of. The community and, and from different angles and part of the process we now will move forward hopefully. And will be to get all that input, including from, from all the diverse, uh, uh, uh. Uh, the, all the diverse groups we have, uh, and population we have, uh, in our area, and especially in that area of town, so. So, so hopefully, uh, that this will be a money well spent and, and at the end of the project, or at the end of, of having spent this. So, uh, we come up with some wonderful ideas that really meet the, all the needs that we're, we all envision.
Great, thank you, council member, with that, roll call vote please.
Mayor Constantine?
I.
Councilmember Sportioli?
Hi.
Spring? Martinez Beltran?
Yeah.
McKay?
Hi.
Okay, that motion carries for one, that moves us now to consent calendar, item nine, which is to prove that August seventeenth. Twenty twenty-two city council meeting minutes, I believe this was a poll from the member of the public. So I will go ahead and open public comment for Mr. Bernowski who asked to have, make comment on this item.
Mayor, before you open it for public comment, um, under your rules, it's, it's past ten o'clock, and the council is supposed to determine whether or not. They're going to complete the remaining items on your agenda, and a reminder, you still have two more consent items to get to.
Thank you for that clarification, and, uh, that's what I was trying to do at nine o'clock, um, but. Yes, we have, still have the people's business to, uh, to attend to this evening. One of them is a hearing that we, um, personally, let me ask, uh, staff, is there any items that can be continued? That don't have to be taken up tonight?
Yeah, so, um, in looking at the agenda after we complete the consent items. Um, there's two public hearings, um, the first is on the inclusionary housing. Um, and density bonus law, um, that does not need to be done tonight and can be continued, I do recommend that we move forward with the T E F R A hearing, as that's been noticed. Um, and shouldn't be a long item, and then the other business items, the financial update and the community funding policy are also not. Um, uh, time sensitive.
So, hearing that, is there anyone from the public, uh, Mr. Bernowski, could you lower your hand just for a second? And while Mr. Bernowski's lowering his hand, I'm gonna ask if there's any members of the public who are here tonight to hear item thirteen, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any hands going up, but while I'm making this statement, if I can have the city clerk maintain her eyes on the public, just in case someone raises their hand. Um, why don't we go ahead and make a motion now, cause it's, it's. As the, the councilor said, it's already ten after ten, and we still have two items in the consent calendar, I don't see us ending before eleven. Um, so why don't we go ahead and, uh, make them, I'll make the motion to move items thirteen. Fifteen and sixteen to a future, uh, uh, meeting.
And, and for the item, um, thirteen, just so we don't have to notice it again, if we can move it to the date certain of October. The.
Nineteenth.
Nineteen, um, our next meeting?
Yes, and, and it could be moved again, but we wanna make sure we move it to a date certain.
Okay, so, and item thirteen is the only one we have to, because it's a public hearing, it's the only one we have to move to a date certain, is that correct?
Correct, the others can just continue to it.
Okay, so with that, I, I'll amend my motion to say that we will continue, uh, items thirteen, fifteen and sixteen. With item thirteen, uh, being moved specifically to our next council meeting, which is October nineteenth, that was the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second rule, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mayor Constantine?
I.
Councilmembers Sportioli?
Hi.
Spring?
Hi.
Martinez Beltran?
Hi.
McKay?
Hi.
Okay, with that, uh, now we'll go back to item nine, and, uh, if we could unmute Mr. Bernowski. Because he wanted to make a comment on this item, and I believe I read it, I did, did I read it already? If not, I'll, I'll read it again.
You did, you did mayor, you did.
I did read it, okay, so I won't do that again, Mr. Bernowski, you will be unmuted shortly.
Well, thank you, mayor, so, uh, I, I alluded to this item earlier tonight, um, at this meeting, um. Almost a month and a half ago, there were factual misstatements, um, that were significant. Uh, to the item that was actually up for approval, it was, uh, to approve a hotel incentive policy. And on multiple occasions, um, there was a comparison made between, uh, vacant land and, and the property tax that a hotel, uh, would generate. And that, and that, uh, figure was used as justification for saying that there'd be no financial risk to the city. Members of the community heard this, and, um, you know, we heard a, we heard a. Public's comment earlier this evening, talk about, um, the, what, what keeping meetings closed means. And, and she, she used the word hypocritical, how many times have we heard? That it's so important to have accurate information, or Mr. McKay likes to say, good information. He gets the good information from the staff, you know, I've been corrected multiple times, when, when I've made misstatements. Um, that weren't even close to being this material, and those, the statements have been corrected in the city manager's report. And in it, in every single instance, three of you, uh, practically jumped out of your chair when you had a chance to congratulate. To, to say how important it was that we did that because we need good information. Now, why wasn't there a simple correction made when we, this, these figures, one point nine million dollars of property tax. Was a factor of one hundred off, nineteen thousand, again, I've, I've made statements that have much less. You know, pertinence and, and been corrected, but when the staff makes the statements, nobody says anything. And in fact, what I was told, basically, you know, paraphrasing, was, well, you know, don't worry. The city council is all really familiar with property tax, so they translated the one point nine million to nineteen thousand, which it really is. You know, that's just, these meetings are for the public, not for you five members, not for the staff, so I'm wondering, Mr. McKay, do you? Are you upset that there was no correction tonight? Um, you know, I like good information too, I like good information from the public. I try to hold myself to using good information, I expect that to come from the staff as well, it's very disappointing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernowski.
And no other hands up, mayor.
And we will go ahead and close public comment, and I will look to my colleagues for discussion or action. How about we move to approve item nine, which is to, uh, uh, minutes, okay, well, motion second, any further discussion? Not seeing any hands going up, roll call vote please.
Mayor Constantine?
I.
Councilmembers Sportioli?
Hi.
Spring?
Hi.
Martinez Beltran?
Hi.
McKay?
Hi.
Now, I have in my notes, item twelve is the next item that's up, am I correct, because I scribbled out so many numbers?
Yes.
Okay, item twelve, which is to release the unclaimed credit less than fifteen dollars. Whose camera's turning on with that, Mr. Nguyen, thank you so much, welcome.
And council members, that Wayne France Director, basically, this item, uh, for you here tonight, it's asking for your approval to, uh. Release the un, these unclaimed funds of fifteen dollars, I mean, less than fifteen dollars and over one year old. Uh, after you, your approval, this unclaimed funds credit of about twelve hundred dollars will be transferred to the tunnel fund. And that concludes my short, 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 uh, report.
Well, thank you so much for that report, council member Spring, you have a question?
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, so then, it's almost a ridiculous question, but, but the, the amount we talk about is not even twelve hundred dollars altogether, right?
That's correct.
It, 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 it's a no, 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 no policy in place that if it's such a low amount, that doesn't have to come to council?
Well, yeah, we love that too, but.
Well, yeah, we love that too, but because according to the statue of the state law that requires, uh, the, uh, councilal action before we do anything with it.
Okay, I was wondering why that would come to us. Okay, then, thank you. That's all.
Now you've got some member, Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. My question was, I wanted to see if we could put this in a community fund. Um, it's community's money, if we could just put it in something, and every year, we continue to add to that.
Since this is a general fund, uh, this is discretionary fund, so it's up to the council, uh, to decide where to, uh, budget or to plan to spend those general fund, uh, discretionary, discretionary fund.
Okay, I'll make a future agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I don't see any other hands going up from my colleagues, so I'll open it for public comment.
I am not seeing any hands up there.
Okay, then we will go ahead and close public comment, and I'll open it up for discussion or action from my colleagues.
Move to approve, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Second.
Motion in the second, uh, second by, uh, Councilmember Spring. Um, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmembers Borcioli?
Aye.
Spring?
Aye.
Martinez Beltran?
Aye.
McKay?
Aye.
Sure, now you guys decided to move fast. So now we're going to skip item thirteen, because we've already voted to move that, but I'm going to ask the city, uh, attorney if we still have time before left nine o'clock. Is it, can we move to do other items, that they're quick?
Um, not the public hearing, because that's already.
No, not the public hearing, because we've already. Move.
I, I would say no, because they've already been continued, but I, I.
Okay.
Do a motion.
Just thought I'd ask.
And do this budget update or something.
Got it. Thank you, sir. With that, we will now move to item fourteen, which is to conduct the Tax, Tax and Equity, uh, Fiscal Responsibility Act or TEFRA hearing, approving the issuance of bonds for Morgan Hill Senior Apartments located directly south of San Pedro Avenue and east of Monterey Road. And I see. Oh. It's Garcia. And we see your presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, community teammates, Rebecca Garcia, Housing Director. We're here this evening to conduct a public hearing, um, in accordance with the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, also known as TEFRA, which requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed is actually located. Next. This particular project is a senior project. It's called Morgan Hill Senior Apartments. It's, uh, located next to the post office on Monterey Road north of the post office. It's total of eighty-two units. It's a one hundred percent affordable rental project. Uh, the design permit is already approved. Next. Uh, the city is required to hold the public hearing to allow the community an opportunity to speak in favor of or against the use of tax-exempt bonds for financing of the project. Council's role this evening is to listen to public testimony regarding the appropriateness of bond financing. Following the close of the hearing, the council will be asked to, um, pass a resi- pass a resolution approving the issuance of the bonds. The city has no financial obligation or legal risk with bond issuance. Next. Approving the issuance of the bonds to finance the acquisition and construction of Morgan Hill Senior Apartments. Again, this is located on south of San Pedro Avenue, east of Monterey Road, and west of Church Street. This is owned and operated by a developer called Human Good Affordable Housing. Uh, they've applied for and received a very competitive tax credit allocation award from, um, the state's seat, um, state of California. Human Good Affordable Housing received these cap- tax credits in the amount of thirty-five million dollars. Next. Uh, thank you. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance, of course, the acquisition, construction of the senior apartments. This project, um, there's much-needed senior housing, affordable especially, and it does meet the council's goals of creating communities and leverage, creating affordable communities and leveraging outside financing. Notices were published in the Morgan Hill Times on the sixteenth of September. Next. And lastly, is the recommendation before you, which is to close the public hearing consistent with the TEFRA Act and, um, consider adopting the resolution approving the issuance of bond for the Morgan Hill Senior Project. That concludes my presentation, Council.
Great. I'll look to my colleagues now to see if there's any questions and council, Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Sorry, I was going to move to approve. I apologize.
Sorry, I was muted. You, okay, that's okay. You made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further questions? Not seeing any, then I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item?
Not seeing any hands up, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and, um, move to council action, or we already made the motion, so there's no other further comment on the motion. Uh, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Mayor Constantine?
Aye.
Councilmembers Borcioli?
Aye.
Spring?
Aye.
Martinez Beltran?
Aye.
McKay?
Aye.
Okay, I'm the mayor. There's no making fun of the mayor. Okay, with that, we have already continued item thirteen to a date specific of October nineteenth, and items fifteen and sixteen to, uh, future meetings, so therefore, I'm going to ask my colleagues if there's any future council initiated agenda items. Councilmember McKay?
I, um, I'm going to go back to something I talked to, uh, some staff about quite a while ago, and that is actually holding kind of a summit of, uh, the law enforcement agencies to look at what we can do about cut-through traffic. I, I'd like to reintroduce that, that concept to see if it's something we can actually facilitate.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two. The first is I'd like to make a future agenda item to see if we could do the uncollected small balances, if that could go into a community fund, and people could use that for plaques or what benches or whatever it is that they're interested in. That's number one. Number two, I would also like a future agenda item to talk about, since we now have an MOU with historical society and any other groups, which I'll, I'll have to look into to see, um, that we are now in partnership with that we have some type of policy on the boards and, and the recruitment of those boards similar to our commissions that we have here at the city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And Mayor Portina?
Yes, Mayor, um, I, I, I don't know if this is going to be, uh, brought up, so I'm going to rely on the city manager to tell me, but, um, you know, I, I, I'm really concerned about a couple of things that happened tonight. One is, um, you know, coming, uh, part of our norms is coming to the meetings prepared and sending in questions in advance of the meeting. And, uh, again, uh, this is just in my opinion, uh, you know, what I've seen is, uh, it looks like some of these questions are left to the Wednesday, um, of the meeting, as opposed to sending the questions in advance. And this is what's, I think, keeping the meeting to a late hour all the time. Again, this is just in my opinion, and, and I'm wondering if we could, uh, I, I know something is scheduled for January, but I wonder if we could bring these norms and talk about what I just said, um, yeah, at an earlier meeting, so we can maybe make way for the January meeting. I hope that made sense, Mayor.
I think it did. But I, I have to tell you, I'm a little foggy right now.
Yeah.
So with that, um, I want to thank my colleagues for their, the coram that they showed later on in the eve, in the meeting. Um, that made me very, very happy, and it made, gave me hope that we can continue the, the, um, wonderful relationship that we have all grown accustomed to and expect from our colleagues. And again, I want to thank you all for, um, realizing that, and I'm going to stop talking now. Again, I just want to say thank you. And with that, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.